All right, we'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of November 12th. First step is the call to order and then the roll call and pledge. Please call the roll.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brizot, absent. Carey.
Present.
Noel.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
We have four.
All right. Now please join in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Right. Well, the first item is adoption of the agenda. And I know there are a couple of changes. One that I was notified, I was, there's a desire to move. I have H-17, the Township Hall Exterior Public Restroom, from the consent agenda. And since we've already dealt with this before, that would move it to unfinished business. And I believe there is a desire to also remove H-18 from the consent agenda.
Um, I'd make a motion to table H-18 until, our December 30th regular meeting.
I would support that.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have support. Are there any further comments? No? All right, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so, um, are there any other changes to the agenda?
So Will, you made a motion to move H-17 to unfinished?
Uh, well, um, there was, you had told me that you wanted to pull it from consent and I was just simply saying that we would go to unfinished business. I don't think it requires an additional motion if we're going to prove that as one of the changes to the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Paying attention.
Any other changes to the agenda?
No, I just, we postponed H-18 to December. What date?
December 3rd.
Thank you. And, um, hearing none, is someone prepared to move the agenda as changed?
I would move, uh, the agenda as modified.
Moved by Riser, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed? The agenda is adopted. Uh, that brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees.
Yes, all included. Um, the one thing I just want to flag for the board is the communication from Jonathan Greenberg regarding the Trailwoods proposal. That seems like something we may need to deal with at a future board meeting.
We talked about that earlier, meeting.
Developments.
Yes. Okay.
Extensively.
Right. Uh, there are no introductions or recognitions this evening. That brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Um, we ask that people address the board with their comments and not each other. Um, and, um, is there someone who would like to serve as our timekeeper?
Great.
Thank you, trustee Ryder. All right, um, please, if you have, um, if you're present and you would like to make a public comment, please come up to the table. Um, and then once we've, um, gone through those who are present, uh, with public comments, we'll turn to those who are participating remotely.
Good evening. Judy Monk. Resident of Sciop Township. Um, the first thing is, uh, thank you to all the veterans. It's Veterans Day after Veterans Day. Uh, but it's my first opportunity to say thank you to all the veterans and all those that are currently serving. Um, I have a son that's in the Navy. So, um, I hope all those that are Sciop residents are safe and are serving our country with much pride. Um, that's the first one. Uh, my second one is, uh, something that's on the agenda, uh, tonight is a personnel matter that there's a elimination of a position, a part-time assistant position. I don't have any objections to it. Um, but I do understand there is a person in that position. And I just want to, I think, hope that that individual is not finding out about this action indirectly or, um, through a meeting. So hopefully this person has been handled with dignity and pride and, um, understands, um, why this position is being eliminated. So, speaking on a people-centric basis. And my third item is also a people-centric item. Is, I checked with Christie and also with Aurora that Sciop does not have a recognition program per se. And so I wanted to take the liberty to in fact, start a certificate of recognition. Um, and I, the person that I would like to recognize is Terri Suave. Um, I think words that come to mind, um, over the last few months is phenomenal and outstanding, um, in what she has done for Sciop and for us. Um, but I will read this because I netted out some of my words besides phenomenal and whatnot. But I'd like to have a certificate of recognition presented to Terri Suave for her outstanding contribution to Sciop Township, especially the awesome Halloween event and successful outcome of the fire department millage. I've signed it, um, and it makes me Sciop proud. And I certainly hope it makes all of us because she did a phenomenal job. And that millage passed. It took a lot of votes, but it took a lot of effort on many people's part. And Terri was instrumental in, um, in running that campaign, the back office. Now, I've included a, a contribution that I will get, give onto her. I will put this over there if anyone is inclined to add to it for Terri's benefit. Um, we will have it over there and I will give it to her, um, tomorrow. Thank you.
Who's next for public comment?
Good evening, Kathleen Brand. Um, I wanted to talk about an agenda item that you have now tabled, but I still have inputs to, um, the item. And this is approval of an MEDC grant application. Um, I would have asked you to table this. Um, there's a number of problems with this application. There are things that are not true nor relevant about this. There are things that are untrue. Um, so there's a statement that, uh, Woodview Commons went through the, uh, WRC review a second time because of a herring nesting area. Well, that had nothing to do with the road. Yes, they modified their plan, but that had nothing to do with the number of buildings and the number of residents and the number, the amount of traffic that is coming in and out of that. And that is the reason the Road Commission mandated the developer to make, um, adjustments. So it had nothing to do with the herons. Um, the herons are good. I'm still worried that they, uh, do construct during the timeframe that they're not supposed to when the herons are mating. Um, the other thing that I think we need to look at for this, um, as far as I know, no one in Sciop Township knew anything about this. Um, I did find this, uh, on the Bridge Magazine as an appropriation and it just said Sciop Roads, a million dollars. Um, until this document came out from Mr. Hathaway, I don't know who in Sciop Township was involved with that. And I think we should know that. I think we should contact our representatives, uh, to ask them who from Sciop Township was involved in this grant is significant. We had no board input on any of this. This road, this was a mandated project from the Road Commission. This was not a priority road, uh, improvement that went through the board. Uh, it's very fishy. The other thing I will note is that you may, you will all remember when Mr. Hathaway tried to save this developer for this property, five hundred thousand dollars for his sewer and water connection fees. And I believe that this developer did save that money or some of that money. There's a problem with that. So why is this developer, why is somebody trying to get this developer five hundred thousand dollars, which will be paid by, by all the residents in the Sewer and Water District? So whatever break he got on his connection fees, which I believe some of those checks were processed, is that correct, Mr. Hathaway? At the lower rate? I know you're not going to talk to me. Um, so now why is he trying to get this developer, um, nine hundred thousand dollars back on something that was mandated by the Road Commission? Why is he doing this? It's very bizarre. One point four million dollars he personally is trying to give to this developer out of Sciop's money or residents' money, the state of Michigan. Why would he do that? Does everybody, anybody wonder why he does these things? Table it, let's talk about it, let's get to the bottom of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township President. I thought long and hard about my public comments for tonight, uh, debating whether to give them or not. And you've been consistent, so I thought I owed it to you to be consistent. So here we go. Supervisor Hathaway, at the last board meeting, you once again lied to your colleagues. You read a long statement about your involvement in bringing charges against trustee Carey. You said, quote, "I stated that it was not my goal to have Jillian charged with a crime." That is not the truth. It was a mistake to say that when it is so easily fact-checked. On page five of his report, Deputy Phillips wrote, quote, "On 12/17/2023, at approximately seventeen hundred hours, I spoke to Mr. Hathaway about the above incident." Mr. Hathaway confirmed that, that given the information, he would like to pursue charges against Jillian. At every step from the beginning of this farce, you've had the power to clean it up. Even after talking to Ian Hubert, you still thought it was a good idea to move forward. You saw an opportunity to hurt an opponent and leapt at it. You then went on to weaponize it to interfere with the election. You personally spent over eleven thousand dollars to create the website and campaign to damage trustee Carey's efforts in her run for supervisor. You chose to focus on the incident that you created in your campaign. You could have been honest and highlighted the policy differences between your view and your opponent's view. You could have debated the issues facing Sciop residents. Sadly, you have shown us that honesty is not a policy you follow. I think that this event will define your legacy in Sciop Township. Having said all that, I would like to sincerely, sincerely thank you. If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't have gotten as involved in Sciop Township issues as I have. As I see it, if it wasn't for your incompetence, corruption, dirty tricks, inversion to the truth, I never would have stepped forward. I never would have met and made friends with many Sciop residents. I never would have received the phone calls, emails, and handshakes from people I never would have met otherwise. It has made me aware of what a lovely township we live in and the good people who live here. And I thank you for that. Weirdly, you and I agreed on many issues. I wish that had happened when it really mattered. Good luck to you and whatever you do next. I wish you the very best. I hope it's not as bumpy a ride as this one has been. I look forward to a new era that places the needs of residents at the top of the list of things to do. Thank you.
Who's next?
I'm Boyd, Sciop Government watchdog. So I wasn't planning on speaking today, but then I noticed that trustee Brizot was not here yet again. So I would like for the new board to understand the mistake that this, some on this board made, which was to appoint instead of run a candidate or run candidates for. Um, trustee Brizot took over a spot of the previous trustee who missed half of the meetings. Trustee Brizot has come to one meeting since August, since the election, the, the, um, election in August. And it's, it's, it's shameful. So I hope that the new incoming board, if they ever at some point in time need to replace a trustee, a position, that you allow for that to be run, um, and let residents decide. Thank you.
Good evening. Pat Stein, longtime Sciop resident. I, um, first want to thank trustee Noel, trustee Carey, clerk Flintoff. I am so looking forward to you in the new board. And I'm glad the residents that voted for you along with me, of course, knew what, what good things should come from Siop, to Sciop, from having you on our new board. Um, next thing I want is, we're going to go back here, well, a couple of years. The night that, um, David Rowley said his fond farewell to all of us, much to our heartache that he would leave us when he was doing such an excellent job. On that night, I did tell supervisor Hathaway and, and I'm paraphrasing what I said. Well, what I said was I really look forward to the day I can say goodbye. I, and I am paraphrasing, if you go back to the meeting, it was a lot more involved than that. So I prepared a long goodbye. Auf Wiedersehen. Erwerbete. Ja, saß. Adieu. Slon. Merci, dite. Ola. De vasina. Tot zinç. Aya. Wahiri. Arrahua. Mea salama. Shalom. Adios. TTFE. Tools. And my personal favorite farewell to you, Billy Hathaway. AMF. Thank you.
Next for public comment?
Hello, Roy Townsend, um, Sciop Township President and, um, co-chair of the Parks Pathways and Preserves. A couple of items on the agenda, just like to point out, um, H-8 possible on action on parks, preserves, entrance signs. Um, I know that Murphy's been working with Road Commission and I think they're very informative, especially on some of the busy roads. Um, it's easy to miss some of our parks and preserves. So let motorists know, okay, here it is. Um, because we have signs sometimes in the preserve, but sometimes you're not going to see that when you're driving down the road. So this gives you advance notice that actually, oh, there's a preserve coming up 400 feet, 500 feet, whatever. So that's, I think that's a really good thing. Um, the other one is H-13, um, possible action completion and probation for Murphy Harrington, Harrington. Um, she's been with Township nearly, um, ninety days or three months. She's been, done a great job, super energetic, really follows through, you know, looking forward on a lot of things. It's exciting to see her energy that she brings on our committee, Park Pathways and Preserves Committee. And the stuff that she has gotten done, obviously she's only been here three months and a lot of it's getting up to speed on different things. So it's been sort of a slower year, I think in 2024, because Anna left and immediately had to bring someone else in. But I can see her energy and, you know, her thought on this. So hopefully that gets approved because she's really done a great job. And I enjoy working with her on the committee and outside the committee and she does other projects. Then item, the last one is H-17, um, Township Hall, Township Hall Exterior Public Bathroom. Um, that's sort of in connection with the Township Hall Park that we've been working on. I worked with Anna on that before and it's obviously been a park back here for I think twenty or thirty years when the flyers were back. But we're trying to bring that, you know, make a, um, natural play space. That seems to be moving forward, making a walking path and some other things. So I think having, you know, we have, when, whatever it was, eight to ten years ago, when they did that expansion, you know, they put the facility, the structure set up for it. And I know we talked about only using building one, that's fine. I mean, there's two facilities, one can be used for something else, HV, um, see, something. Um, one would be perfectly fine, a unisex bathroom. Um, so hopefully, you know, there's some thought given to that because I think, you know, we started now, um, I mean, it's a fair amount of money, but if you ever do have any home improvement stuff done or, you know, I, I work in road construction and trail construction. Things are a lot more expensive today than they were, um, last year and they're going to be more expensive a year later. Um, so I think, you know, the sooner we can keep, get that moving, it just makes sense. Um, so hopefully next year, when the, um, nat- natural play space comes together, they're all, and I know, I think they're working with OHM to get the path put in. So as things start coming together, you know, a lot of says a lot of lead time. So in 2025, hopefully like a year from now, we can say, oh, this is what we've accomplished out here in, um, the Township Hall Park. And just look back on and say, okay, this is our success. But a lot of this stuff takes lead time. That's why I think we've been talking about this. So that's all I had. Thank you.
We didn't want to warn the resident and co-chair of parks, preserves and pathways. I have a few things I want to talk about. I'd like to echo what Roy said, um, this thing with the bathroom. I think that, you know, if it were coming down to one bathroom, having a unisex bathroom with a changing table or whatever, it's going to be, um, really helpful as we develop this park out here, which has sat there for, you know, but three decades. And so, and the bathrooms have been sitting there for a while too. So I think it's a good idea just to move forward, get that over with. I think we're going to find it, uh, really helpful down the road. And I think the public are really going to find it helpful. Um, one thing I also want to talk about is, um, it came to my attention that, um, the developer for, uh, Woodview Commons, um, that's probably going to be part of the discussion tonight about the, um, MED grant that he applied for in order to take care of some, uh, requirements that the board, um, asked of him. Um, and he applied, from my understanding is he applied for a grant and the board needs to move on this. And I think that, um, in good faith, I mean, this person, when we discovered that we had a heron, uh, heron rookery, um, close to his development area, we requested that he make sure that he moved it far enough away from the rookery to not be a problem for the herons. And he was very, very good about that. I think he acted in good faith. And I think, that said, I think that the township should also act in good faith and, um, working with him with this grant. To take, to take care of whatever, um, uh, improvements that the township have asked of him. So I know that's going to be later on in the agenda. I also want to also, um, echo what Roy said about, um, Murphy. Murphy has hit the floor running. She has not wasted any time. She's done educational programming. She's, has just been, been very impressive to me. And I think that, um, yeah, I'm glad she's on board and, uh, I think we're in a good place with that. Um, okay.
Hi, Laura Hindle, Sciop Township President. They just reminded me of something that, um, kind of came to mind quickly, um, regarding these bathrooms. Uh, assuming it's in the back or something like that because the, the, um, park is back there. I have a friend who owns a blue house on the corner of Pauline and Main Street. And last Thursday, a drug addict used his bathroom in the, that's, you know, out in the driveway and is dead now. Died in the driveway, was found there. You need to think long and hard about lighting, having it open all the time, not having any security, not having, you know, cameras, et cetera. Because we do have homeless encampments here. We have one right at Miller and M14. That's getting larger daily, um, that MDOT is unable to remove. And because police won't go out there and do anything either because of Ann Arbor and their promotion, so to speak, I guess is what they're kind of saying to me is that, um, you know, they, they give them these bus passes and everything and they have, and they give them the tents even. So, you know, you're going to have, you could potentially have a big problem. You, I saw you flinch, so apparently the tents are given out by like Chirpas and other organizations, et cetera, so. I'm not, I'm sorry?
Right. My apologies.
It's okay. So that's all I was told, so I'm just repeating what I've been told. But anyway, there is a large encampment right on Miller across from the bus stop. If you want to go by there, you can see it, they've got a nice bonfire, they've cut down trees. And, uh, they have a large tent city going already. But just keep that in mind that, you know, there's not the security around here at Sciop Township and, uh, drugs are prevalent.
Thank you.
So anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Just to, uh, clarify in the, in the moment before we invite, uh, others to participate, the item that was referenced, um, was moved from tonight's agenda, item H-18 to December 3rd. So there won't be more discussion of that item this evening. Just want to clarify, if people are here waiting for that, um, that won't be coming up this evening. Yeah, if there's anyone now, anyone else who wants to participate for a moment?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. First up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Heather Berkowitz. Jonathan?
Hello, good evening. This is Jonathan Greenberg, Sciop Township President. How are y'all doing? And, uh, thank you for taking my call. Um, I do, uh, want to ask, uh, uh, sorry, ask, I want to echo Rob's comments in that in the last four or five years, I feel like I've found my own little personal breakfast club here in Sciop Township. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, Will playing the role of Brian's father. That was a good one. You guys don't remember Breakfast Club? Come on. Okay, anyhow, my only serious question today, geez, I swear, you're a tough audience. All right, so, um, my only real question is I had heard that the park road, uh, is not going to be paved this fall, as planned because of some utilities issue. I wanted to ask if it's going to be opened or remain closed, uh, until next spring because it is a real big inconvenience for many people. Um, one of them is, uh, me, and so that's why I'm asking for them. So if you could give me an update on that, I'd appreciate it. Under that, have a great meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Heather Berkowitz, followed by Stevens iPad. Heather?
Hi there. Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes. Hi.
Oh, hi. Um, thanks for allowing my comment. Um, I just, um, I wanted to just sort of, uh, mirror what, um, my fellow committee members have said that Roy Townsend and Rita, um, about Murphy, um, stepping in and doing excellent work in a very short period of time with a lot going on. Um, hats off to her and to my other committee members. Um, I'm a member of the Parks Pathways and Preservation Committee, I'm the secretary. Um, and I- And I think that my fellow committee members are very well spoken, much more than I and have touched on a lot of good points tonight about items that maybe we're not talking about right now, which are the bathrooms. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if this is, you know, H18 or whatever the number is on the agenda, but you know, I of course support bathrooms in public space and in a park because, you know, where have we gone? I'm not saying that I'm the most well-traveled, but I've certainly made my way around this country. And every park I've been to, there have been bathrooms, maybe not changing stations, but bathrooms. And I think that the fact that we're even debating on whether or not we should or should not have, you know, public restrooms, sort of ridiculous. So, and also like if a homeless person wants to come in and like wash their hands in the bathroom, like yes, sure, do it. Like if you're not bothering anybody, that's fine. You know, I, I feel like comments made about those that do and do not have housing in our community. You know what? We do not have a place to speak to, to that until we actually provide legitimate, affordable housing in our community. Like homeless camps and like all, all that, all that sort of prejudice essentially that's being spoken about towards those that don't have housing and proper care in our community. Like, I'm sorry, we need to throw that out. Like, you know, we're, we live in a very privileged space here. And if we can provide and help, that's what we should be talking about, you know? We're not, we shouldn't be talking about, you know, the stereotypes that exist within the homeless community in our county. So, and again, like, you know, I'm not as well spoken as, you know, my fellow committee members who speak to the actual relevant events in this township. But, but I do think that, you know, bathrooms are sort of a silly thing for us to be arguing at this point. Like, yeah, let's have some restrooms for our community, you know, at our local parks. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next up is Stevens iPad, followed by Caroline Altmore.
It's Stevens iPad.
Hi. Last name, not iPad, but my name is Steve Hurt. I'm a Syo resident and also a member of Parks Pathways and Preserves. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I particularly wanted to talk about H17, the exterior public restroom. And my wife is visually impaired and we find it, if there are family restrooms available at parks, we, we sometimes in smaller airports have problems finding a, a place to, to easily utilize. And it's just another, another aspect of that that I, I really think makes this a positive for the community. So certainly want to also voice my, my support for, for Murphy. She's, she's doing a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steven. Next up is Caroline Altmore, followed by Patrick McLaughlin. Hi Caroline.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for taking my comment. I'm Caroline Altmore, Syo resident. I want to thank Judy for Terry's comments about the fire department and the wonderful event for Halloween. It was the first time I'd ever done that and it was delightful and I plan to do that again. And I'm delightful that the village delighted them in those past. I'm looking forward to a new board, new transparency that's serving the residents. I'm disappointed at trustee Brazil for not being there yet again. And I would like to say that I'm a little confused because on the agenda, and it may have been already like tabled, but there was discussion about a cell tower. And it talked about West Delta and all the documents, but when you map it, it says Peters Road is where the map actually brings it. So I just kind of want to like throw that out there. But I look forward to a new board, new transparency, a fresh time for Syo residents. And thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you, Caroline. Next up is Patrick McLaughlin. Hi, Patrick.
Hello. I'm Patrick McLaughlin, Syo Township President. Thank you for the opportunity to give my opinion on some matters before the board tonight. First, I'd like to agree with my colleagues about Murphy's impact. I've been very impressed with her energetic and effective efforts so far. And I would also like to communicate my support on the agenda for item H17 regarding the completion of the exterior public restroom, serving members of the community, taking advantage of Syo Township Park. I'm really pleased to see that we're taking the next steps to providing a significant quality enhancement to living in Syo Township. As a longtime member of the Parks Advisory Board, which has now evolved into the Parks Preserves and Pathways Committee, I enthusiastically support the funding of this project and encourage the board to approve the expenditure. We're finally addressing an urgent need to offer recreational activities for the citizens of Syo Township on our public property. And the Syo Township Park should include an ADA compliant pathway as well as an ADA compliant bathroom to ensure that all of our citizens can enjoy public spaces in Syo. Encouraging people to get outside and enjoy what our community has to offer makes us a stronger, more desirable community in which to live. Please support this effort to provide basic amenities which our community deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Please raise your Zoom hand. I see, sorry, we got 33 people here. I see a couple more. Next up is Diane Benson. Hi Diane.
Hi. Couple of things. First, I want to thank Jess and all the volunteers and people that worked the elections. We all felt safe and thank you so much to you and your team. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the Friends of the Library Bookshop. There, I'm a volunteer there. They are open every Saturday from 10 to 4. I sort fiction. I buy fiction too. There, the great prices and the funds from Friends of the Library support a lot of programming for children and others at the Ann Arbor Public Libraries. So come and shop. Lots of books there for the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Next up is Brian. Saw your hand. Did you still want to speak? Okay, Brian's hand is down. I see no other interest in public. Will, I just had a couple of responses from this time.
I wanted to go first.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll just brief response to public comment. Rita mentioned one item about H18. I just wanted to clarify that there were no township requirements on the road. This was all road commission. Our township engineer didn't even weigh in on it. So it was all road commission requirements on Woodview Development. My understanding is wholly unrelated to the site plan revision that they did in response to our concerns about the herons. The second thing I wanted to respond to, I wanted to thank Pat and Bill Stein for bringing all of the homemade cookies on election day. And the third thing, and if I could ask Aurora to maybe speak to this. To Judy Monk's comment, I want to thank Aurora Northrup. She prepared six items on our consent agenda with great care, including great care put into H16 and given Judy's human concern. Would you mind speaking a little bit to that?
Yes, absolutely. So initially I did have a conversation with the assistant in the Treasurers Department. And she did let me know that she was unsure whether or not she was going to stay after the 20th of November. I did have a couple of conversations with her to see if she was interested in, in anything else, if the job was to be changed, the job description, the hours, et cetera. And she was not interested. So yes, I did have probably four conversations with her. So it definitely was, you know, taken with care in terms of the elimination of the position. So she was well aware of it.
Thank you. I knew that, but just wanted to give you a chance to say that. And also thank you for your evaluation on the probationary period of Belisha King and Murphy Harrington and all the work that you've done. So thank you.
Jessica?
Yep.
Okay. The, a couple of things. One, there's a question about access to Park Road. We learned from the road commission last week that because of a utility line of some kind that was discovered during the construction work, that they were going to have to delay completion. And so they weren't going to meet their schedule for getting the road ready to be used by the end of November as they had originally hoped. And I reached out to Gary Straight at the Road Commission, the person who notified us, and asked if there was any possibility for opening up Park Road for use by motor vehicles during the winter if construction is suspended. And I have not yet heard back from him. But my hope is that the, the road commission will allow motorists to use Park Road. I don't know if that, if it's in a state that is usable, but that's the, one of the questions. The, the problem, part of the problem is that the existing bridge and stapler just before Park Road is no longer safe. And so that part is not usable. But I think it would help a lot of people, not just in the Trailwoods subdivision, but further west on, on Park Road if it was passable during the winter. So hopefully we'll get a favorable response from the road commission. The other thing is I think there's some confusion about how the cooperation of the Woodview Commons developer with the township in terms of protecting the Blue Heron Rookery, how that relates to the road commission requirements. And just briefly, the, the development was fully approved with a site plan that came closer to the rookery. They went, the developer came back with a completely, well, not completely revised, but a dramatically revised site plan to move the development further north away from the Blue Heron Rookery. They went through the entire planning process all over again. And that resulted in them coming back to the road commission for what they thought was going to be kind of a, you know, basically, you know, thank you, here's your permit. The road commission used that opportunity to require additional road improvements from the developer, which is one of the things the road commission does, is find a way to get things accomplished and have other entities responsible for it. And, but it came as a surprise to the developer because nothing had changed really in terms of the traffic count from their development. So it's not like the second site plan was different and somehow triggered these road improvements. The road improvements were basically the road commission finding that they had another chance to get something accomplished. And then they seized that opportunity. That's how the cooperation of the developer with Blue Heron Protection and Effort resulted in the road improvements. It wasn't a direct result of Blue Herons or changes to the site.
Or anything that township asked.
Or anything that the township asked. And there was no, and just to clarify further, there was no communication with the township in terms of seeking this state funding. That was not something that anyone around this table or anyone else at the township was involved in. We did know because the developer, well, some of us knew it anyway, because the developer came to the Downtown Development Authority seeking help with this new cost, that they were trying to find funds to pay for it. But that's as much as we knew. Then there, but, so in, in terms of Syo Township's involvement with seeking these funds, there, there really wasn't any.
And that's, that's my understanding too, which is why it was such a surprise when in the budget it said $1 million for Syo Township road improvement. Like, hey, who asked for that? The answer is no one.
Well, someone, but, but no one from Syo Township.
But no one from Syo Township. And so, you know, certainly we'll talk about this more. I debriefed a bit of this with our lobbyist, who I think, you know, that was part of the, the problem. But, but certainly, you know, it's not, the work's also done. The work's all done, is the other thing to note. So it's certainly not a project that I think the Roads Committee or anybody would have ever imagined remotely would be a priority for Syo Township. So it, it's uncomfortable to be put in the position of stating that that is our priority when it is not, and the work is done. And it was a road commission obligation on a private developer unrelated to the township.
That's probably enough said for something that we're not going to be acting on tonight.
Look at us not talking about it.
So with respect to Park Road, does it make any sense to pave from Green Mountain Circle to Cedar Bridge? Or does it make any sense to put the pathway in that people can use it? I mean, I know that the, 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 the bridge is messed up and not safe and there's got to be gas infrastructure move. But are there things that can go on that would benefit the, the Trailwoods residents there?
Part of the message from the Road Commission is that at this point, paving is not really an option because the asphalt plants have closed down for the season.
Okay, nevermind.
It's deer hunting time.
Well, whatever the cause is of the seasonal stop to the asphalt plants, they have stopped. And yes, it's not safe to use the connection from stapler to Parker.
There, there's a pathway there. There's another, I mean.
I, I know, I know.
Maybe if they're able to open up park at least from the Green Mountain Circle for all those residents to, you know, instead of having to go and see. But hopefully they'll be able to open it up. Just keep stapler shut down.
Plan B or there's something.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what we're waiting to find out from the Roads Commission.
On the other side of Park Road.
It's not really something that we do more than, than plead for.
Who, who, who does the institution of pleading on behalf of residents to like, okay, what, what can we get to the millerage, the setback, if anything?
He's waiting for an answer.
If we don't have an answer by November 20th, then I will end over the baton of asking for relief.
Thanks.
But I'll, I'll pursue, I'll certainly pursue it between now and then. Are there any other responses to public comments or should we move on? Let's move on. The next item is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes for the regular meeting of October 22nd. Are there any corrections to the minutes? One here to move approval of the minutes as presented. So move, move by risers, support by Kerry. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Proposed. Minutes are approved. Brings us to the consent agenda as modified. So a modification is items H17 and H18 are no longer on the consent agenda. And I believe there were some last minute corrections to a couple of items, but those have been made. Do we need to note those before proceeding or is that important?
I, I can do so the, to, actually Christine, why don't you on H4 and H5? Do you want to see a piece?
Oh, yeah. We made the correction. I got to get to it. But we made the change at the bottom. Remove the resolution. Or should I have just to say that it was approved by the board on November 12th?
These are the two resolutions in those two items. I believe there was a correction to the referenced fund in the item H, in a motion in item H21.
Yep, I, I kept it the same and took the 500 off the back end of it. I just put it under the other general building. Yeah, from other general building to building names.
So with those, those scripters corrections, is someone prepared to move adoption of the consent agenda?
One other question. Julian, you had the question about the refunds that were noted in any of the bills?
Oh, yeah. I mentioned those to you earlier to get some idea. It was brought up, we brought it up in the development meeting.
The specific questions, I mean, we do those all the time. So if there's a specific project, Kristy, Fran, Rebecca manage all of those, but those appear on most of our payables.
Those were five.
That's what I thought. Was there a particular project you had a question?
Well, it's, if you go to the payment of the bills, and it would be twenty each, I think, was it seven, six or seven? For example, and it's on other pages too, but that's seven and eight. Which? Oh, sorry, it's under my whole bunch here. Oh, yeah, here up at page seven, this would be under the sewer fund. And the first three, it says excess deposit refund. There's Trailwoods, Meyer, Woldrum. So what does that mean?
Where's see the excess deposit refunds for projects that are closed out?
It's when they, when they finish the project, because they put deposits down and then the engineer, they work from it, they do inspection, things like that. And then when the project's all fully done, whatever's left, it's going back to the developer.
All right.
They figure out that those deposit amounts at the very beginning.
And then you see there expenditures out of those.
Yeah.
A lot of them under engineering fee, planning fee. You also see a ton of expenditures with those project names. That's because the developer fees are covering those costs.
Okay.
If I like to the Trailwoods. See a detailed spreadsheet from it if I can.
Yeah, it was just, there's questions that were, came up, but yeah, Trailwoods isn't closed out yet.
No, I mean, but I think they, they do it phases. So.
Okay.
That's, these deposits are separate from like the, the question of like the bonds releasing.
The, um, yeah, absolutely. That's totally separate. Okay.
Yeah, because you know, we have a lot of questions about Trailwoods right now, so.
I'll, I'll pull the, the full spreadsheet for you so you can see it.
Unless there's further discussion, is someone prepared to move the consent agenda? I would move the consent agenda. Right, move by riser.
How's?
Second by Noel. Please call roll.
Okay, for rules of order tonight, we're starting with riser. Riser?
I'm sorry, yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Lentalk?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted, six year old.
Okay. So it brings us to reports. We have several written reports. Are there any questions or comments or additional oral reports?
I have a comment to make about mine. I could not prepare, which would have been my final report, because we're still waiting for information on a bank statement. So I hopefully will have it this week. I will prepare it. I'll make sure every board member gets a written copy and, and Will can put it on the website too.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Donna. I have, I have one comment on the election. I'd like to give a more in-depth update at our next meeting when we have the final number. The canvas is still underway. Speaking of Veterans Day, we did have over 20 military cast their ballots from around the world and over 120 overseas civilians. We did break records. We're over 12,000 voters. That's the most people in Syo that have ever voted. But we'll provide more debriefs, but just want to say thank you to everybody, the staff, all the election inspectors, everybody who got them. So thank you.
There are no further comments. Let's move on then to the regular report from the project manager.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Thanks for the opportunity to give a presentation and a summary of what the project manager's been doing since approximately January when I was hired. I did submit a list of all of the items that I've been attending and participating in, and feel free to ask questions. I don't know if it's a kind of a question and answer at any time, if you have anything that I'm, I'm not explaining it very well. Feel free to let me know and I'll try to give you a little bit more background. Let's start with prepared monthly PPP, which is the Parks, Pathways and Preserves agendas in attended the monthly meetings. Coordinating with OHM, which is our consultant on the Z Road Phase Five Pathway Project. Also met with the neighbors, fronting the Z Road Path Five Path, Phase Five Pathway, to see if we need additional easements out there to let them know the updates that Phase Five is coming. There, it's under engineering review as we speak. We've also completed the Van Curly parking lot and future improvements to the Township Hall Park that you may have seen out there. We've also got OHM designing kind of an ADA accessible perimeter pathway out there that hopefully, as we discussed, possibly to the Township Hall bathroom. Also prepared monthly financial report that you can see. So I've been attending those meetings on a monthly basis. Same thing with the attended and assisted with the monthly rack, which is the Road Advisory Committee meeting. With that one, I've been, you know, looking at layers in the GIS and, and a second here, I'm gonna get my reading glasses on. You can tell I need my vocals. I can't read these old ones on. So layers of GIS and trying to get other layers, you know, that pin down whether it's a public or private or primary or secondary street, or if it's paved or gravelled. I'm also, I was also a non-voting member of the Transit Advisory Committee, also known as TAC. That actually took place more in the winter and spring and summer months. With that, that was, that was the ATA bus mileage. So drafted the meeting minutes. I was the most part of the secretary of that committee. Conducted transit services survey and tabulated results. Presented an amenity chart and cost to upgrade bus stops to all of the stops in primarily on Jackson Road, but it was also out on Miller and Long Syle Ridge. And got the transit mileage. Hopefully I helped in passing that for the, at the August primary at that vote. Also served as the Indro Parks Director, previous director was, got rehired at another position. We did hire two park stewards, situated in the interview process. Just a little update there, we have lost one of the stewards. They went back to school. So we do have one steward at the moment who also is having his last day this Friday. So we will get our stewards. So I, I suspect Murphy and I will be doing more of the maintenance cleanup, whatever needs to be doing, that needs to be done out at parks and preserves. Again, kind of assisting with the Township Hall Park. I'm sure we're, we're going to discuss more about the bathrooms, but we also have the natural play structure that, that may be coming here in, in the near future. Also assisted with Murphy at the Van Curly Park for the possible burn break. We cleared that pathway out there. Same thing that with the consultant out at Liberty Pond. So we may do a prairie burn sometime in the, kind of the distant future. I think that one's kind of on the back burner at this time. And then obviously inspecting parks and preserves to comply with maintenance. Stuff like cutting back brush, making sure that the garbage is picked up and the trails are mowed. And we've had instances of some vandalism to make sure that that's been taken care of also. On the side note, I have been assisting with zoning inquiries and site compliance inspections. Stuff with our, our consultant that's doing the planning and zoning. That's just front counter, you know, assistance. If there's somebody who has, you know, zoning questions or needs a zoning compliance permit or just, you know, needs a front counter help. Done some site inspections for final site plan compliance for issues, issuance of the certificates of occupancy for some of the developments that have been currently going on. And then also previously was assisting with our zoning code enforcement officer with any types of enforcement he had. He's no longer here, so I can't say I've been doing that in the past month, I would say. But if there's any type of zoning enforcement, I'm sure I can help out there too. Sustainability Committee for the Township Hall HVAC system. Again, we're going to have a presentation tonight with that. So I served on the committee there. And evaluated the, the various HVAC systems for the older part of Township Hall, which I think is approximately 30 years old. And then Caleb will be making that presentation tonight and give you probably some of our recommendations. And that will, a decision isn't expected tonight, but I think probably our next board of trustees will, will probably start focusing on which one they prefer. Also on the agenda tonight, which was just approved as, as part of the the consent agenda, was the Jackson Road Complete Streets Safety Study and Implementation Plan. I will be the main contact with OHM on that one and running through that one with the $50,000 grant that we have. Let's see, the contract is scheduled for approval hopefully tonight and when we can move forward with getting that scheduled to have that completed, I think in the next maybe eight to 10 months, I think is the target. And let's see, continuing on, Park Road connection that was brought up tonight. We have met on site with our OHM consultants and foresters, determine the least impact on landmark trees for a future pathway. It'll be on the north side of Park Road, coordinating with the PPP on getting future pathway connections to the existing Park Road pathway. And then last but not least, I, I put in here, we've been discussing it and will continue to discuss the Syo Wagner Road barn, the reroute there. Have met out there a couple of times to discuss the reroofing options, met with the friends of Syo Barn, continue to discuss the project with them. We have solicited, solicited some bids. We've submitted there to, if we happen to go with the reroute as opposed to possibly selling the Syo Barn. So that's kind of a brief summary. I know it was really fast, but if you have any questions, you know, any comments, I'm sure I've missed some stuff, but that's, I know it's been going on in the last nine months.
Who's playing in the pond or water?
I did add some pictures. So that's actually Murphy who brought waiters in and we assisted her. She was brave enough to go out there with waiters. We had, somebody had sunk one of the paddle boats out there and it's been sitting in the middle of Liberty Pond. So as she roped it up, we dragged it right back in to clean it up and got rid of the, the paddle boat. And in fact, if we go through a couple of the pictures, that was Liberty Pond. There was, that's one of them that had some vandalism out at the park. You can see the two stewards, that's Yanson and John. You know, John's term will come to an end here at the, the end of the week. And then I, I put in their Van Curly Preserve because the parking lot is finally done, but now the next step will be working on the burn breaks, do the prairie burn out there. And the receding at some point in the future.
Um, thank you so much for presenting, Chris. It's great. I, I am glad that we approved the Jackson Road Complete Streets and, you know, on our transit fund, I just want to remind ourselves we have a deficit on the horizon for our bus fund. We talked about that. And we'll be launching the budget process, the new board, hopefully pretty quickly at our first or second meeting. And it's my hope that you'll be able to run point on the transit fund for the township and sort of kind of making plans and ideas for how we're going to deal with that deficit. Another hope I have is that your work with Laura will grow in terms of the zoning inquiries and site compliance inspections. So I'm not quite sure what that cross training looks like. I know you, you have a lot of expertise from Ann Arbor with that. But would love to see you continue to grow in that role as our zoning enforcement officer along with Laura, kind of backing her up on that.
Thank you. That was very impressive.
Oh, well, thank you.
I had no idea. You were doing all these things.
Yeah. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome. Well, good, good.
Hey, that brings us to unfinished business. We moved item 17 to unfinished business. That's the Township Hall exterior public restroom. And I know this was originally on the consent agenda, so you guys may, may not have come with, with comments on, in your back pocket, but.
Oh, I would some comments in my back.
So this, Chris, you prepared this agenda item. I know you and Murphy are both working on this. Start us off with sort of laying it out there and then we can have board discussion, comments, questions.
So we previously, well, I'll start with the location that it is kind of on the northwest corner. Everybody's familiar with the two unfinished bathrooms that I think constructed approximately 2017 when the utilities wing was, was constructed on the Township Hall. They've been vacant since that time. They weren't finished. They're currently used for the most part, it looks like for storage, for staff storage. It does have some plumbing in there. It's going to need some additional plumbing. We did bring this back. We've discussed it, you know, at our PPP meetings quite a few times. Received support to at least finish one of the bathrooms. We'd like to do two, but we understand that as we go through our HVAC presentation, they may need one of those to do part of the, if we do the geothermal. So at this time, we're only proposing one of the bathrooms out of the two. We did come in front of the board on September 24th and did get approval to start the engineering on the bathrooms to complete those. And we did approve, I believe it was $9,200 to do that, that portion. So we've got the engineering done. We did set it out for a bid. This is the Phoenix Contractors, who were the original contractors who did the Syo Township addition back in 2017. So they're the most familiar with this project. They've been sending out contractors, in this case plumbers, to take a look at the bathroom and give us bids. We've kind of gone back and forth with them on what, you know, what our budget, we think are within the parameters of our budget. And what they presented is approximately $30,000. I think it's actually $29,900, something like that. We, we got it down a little bit more. You know, that would come out of our general fund balance to, to finish off the, the one bathroom out there. And that would include, you know, the engineer we've already approved, but that would include, you know, the permit fees also that go with it and to bring it all up to color.
A lot of money for one is.
Yeah.
I would like to speak on that if I could. I will agree that the price that came back to us is, is higher than we anticipated because we were under the impression, because Phoenix Contracting had done this addition to begin with, that they had completed it as part of the completion of the addition. But as we found out, there is additional plumbing that is required to fix the fixtures too. Yes, that is the case.
Sorry, sorry. And I'm just nodding my, shaking my head because there were so many things they didn't finish in that addition. So I'm just disappointed to hear that there's one more.
And they should have, or they didn't pay for it?
That they should have, that we paid for. It's been fantastic. Not, not fantastic.
And I think that it's a good way to gauge the actual ultimate reasonable price that we're looking at. If you were to look at another item that was on the consent agenda, which was the approval of the potentially remodeling slash redecoration of the bathrooms that are already inside Township Hall. This is above the price that we have for an entire remodel of a bathroom that would be for the public use, even when they're not able to or not comfortable with coming into the Township Hall to ask for permission. So if you think about the fact that there is plumbing that is going to go into this cost, and it's still below 30,000, but we're looking at putting in new sinks and tiles and looking at a $31,000 cost. I mean, I think that's pretty comparable. In fact, quite inexpensive.
Tile in this outdoor bathroom?
No, I'm saying, I have H21.
Yeah, well, there's, I think we're doing three bathrooms and replacing sinks and countertops and tile and the toilet.
Right, but if you consider that there's no plumbing, there's, but you look at the, what is the majority of the cost for this bathroom? Over 10,000 of it is just to finish the plumbing.
Can we, if we want to do this kind of, I want to try to understand what the proposal is, the actual cost.
I think, just to make sure that we, before we move, before we move on, I want to clarify, make sure I understand what you're saying, Murphy, is that basically you're comparing the sort of remodeling of the existing bathrooms inside to. to the new construction essentially of the one bathroom outside.
Correct.
And part of, I think, what we'll be going through when we look at the cost items is what's inherent in new construction that is not required when you're just remodeling existing bathrooms. You don't have to get all of those permits. You don't have to have the architectural plans that are required. You don't have to have all of the building inspections that are required. So I think there's, that's part of why this is apples to oranges, in a sense.
In a sense, sure.
Before we, before we move on, is there more to your presentation?
I would just probably want to reiterate that was previously said, but I also was speaking with Phoenix Contractors. You know, if we would have done this back in two thousand and seventeen, yes, it would have been done at a much greater reduced cost. And it is going to go up probably five to ten percent every year that we wait, typically depending on labor and material costs. So yes, it may seem like a lot today, but it's only going to go one way in the future, and that's up. And that's coming from the contractors, so.
I'd also like to add that the fact is that this bathroom is a necessity as the park continues to grow, as we continue to add play structures and a pavilion and advertise that green space for other organizations to use. We are going to see an increase in traffic, so it's not a matter of, if we're going to do it, it's a matter of are we going to do it now when it's twenty-nine thousand? Or are we going to do it three years from now when the need is even greater and the public is specifically asking for it and wondering why this accommodation wasn't here to begin with? And now we've gone up in price twenty to thirty percent.
We could ask you to rent porta potties. Or a season.
Just one big. You have to also consider how ADA accessible are porta potties?
They make them.
How many bids did we get?
We went through Phoenix and they got bids from different plumbers.
We don't.
Listen, I'm committed to doing this. I really am, and I'm committed to doing it at the best price. How do we know that we've got the best price? Are there things that don't require licenses that we can maybe do ourselves to the extent we had staff to do ourselves? Are there ways we could, I don't want to say cut corners, but save on cost by doing some within if that, if that's even from the realm of possibility. I don't think we have licensed HVAC, electrical and plumbers on staff. Maybe we do, but.
We don't, and that's, there's electricity in there already. It's what I'm confused about is there's, I mean, I mean, I want to know exactly what we need. And this is just some things that were thrown together that we don't have explanation for.
Well, maybe, would it help to go as.
I would, just to respond to trustee Ariza's question, during the summer months when I first were starting to take this on, it was difficult to get anybody to come out and even look at it to bid on it.
Why is that?
It's because it's such a small project and such a low cost for a contractor to come out and do something that's, let's say it is around thirty thousand dollars. We couldn't get them to return our call. We finally got Phoenix Contractors because they're the original builders, at least they're the only ones who would return a call. That's, it's just too small a project for a lot of contractors out there.
Noah has been the contractor with Phoenix, has worked with us. He's been extremely generous in cutting down the cost as much as possible, so much as they are taking a loss in their own profit by continuing on with this project.
Is Mans Lumber, if Mans is doing the other stuff, is that code, is that code? Do they need small permits for what's doing in the new ones to swap out sinks? I would think so.
Christie, you know the plumbing.
Probably don't.
It's only compliance.
I don't want to say more than public safety.
Well, if you already have the fixtures and you heard the plumbing and you're just going to change the sinks or whatever, but if you move the plumbing, yes, then you have to have new permits.
I mean, I haven't yet called to ask, but.
We're not changing anything other than just changing out. Can we keep talking about that outside?
But that's why he's.
But what I'm getting at is, is this something that maybe Mans could do, like?
Did we ask? No, I don't think so. Did, has Brandon, our building maintenance, is building maintenance is under Brandon? Has he been involved in any of this?
Not too much, no, no. I know he's been involved with the three interior bathrooms, but the exterior? No, and there's no licensed plumbers or electricians or anything that's, you know, in the trades on his staff.
No, but he's the building maintenance director. So that's why I thought maybe he should have been involved because that's part of the building.
I did speak with him and this was something that we covered when we first brought up this topic was how building maintenance was going to be done or how maintenance in general for the bathroom is going to be done. And there was the conversation of, we don't know when Kevin's position that was vacated is going to be filled or when. And so we veered away from relying on the utilities department for maintenance. That's why in the plan that I laid out, there is contingents that don't include the utilities department.
Sure. Anthony, we're going to go around. Do you want to ask me questions or make any comments?
I was ready.
You know, we can start over here. I'm pointing at you.
I'm a fan of bathrooms.
Yeah, it just, well, I asked, I was trying to track you down, but we, because I wanted to see the bathroom and you two only have the keys to that bathroom, so Chris was available to show me. And you said that at this afternoon that it was just needed the fixtures. But now we're needing more plumbing?
Plumbing is part of it, yes. There is plumbing because they've just got it capped and stubbed through there. You're still going to have to meet the plumbing code. I'm not a licensed plumber, but yes, there's additional plumbing involved with this. It does have the floor drains and it does have one water line that's running through that was stubbed through and capped off through the wall.
Can I also, is that can be quiet, please? Vina and Judy, Ryan, Judy, can I ask you?
Yeah, because we're not going to paint it. We're not going to put any, it's just going to be bare with, well, you said baby changing. There's a urinal, there's a toilet and a sink. For thirty thousand dollars, that's why it just seems so high. But I think that, you know, we should.
What are we going to do with the floor? What's nothing according to?
We took, we've got the bids. If you'd like to get the epoxy flooring in, we can do that. I think that was like another forty-five hundred. So we started looking at, it's fairly new in there. We should be okay for a while, whether we need to get it epoxied or not in the future. Same with the painting. If you took a look at it, it looks, we started going through it saying, these are the things that have to be done and things that probably can wait. But we're happy to put, include painting and epoxy flooring and.
I know if somebody goes, but, you know, like.
I don't know, I've camped at a lot of places and I just know that when.
The epoxy protects the flooring mostly from salt damage. And as much as the forty, the forty-five hundred, it's just, it is a lot to do. And until we see that a need is there.
Anything, will it, and people go in with wet shoes and then will it be really slippery the way it is now if you don't do anything?
No, I don't think it would be more slippery than having epoxy.
I think you have to seal the raw concrete.
To seal it, but we don't have to.
And that is something that possibly, I did talk with, you know, Brandon McNeil about that. That is something they possibly could do in the future with, with our maintenance man or somebody that he's got on staff to just go in there and epoxy it. We could go down to, you know, Menards or Lowe's or Home Depot and probably get something like that done. I think we could do that a little cheaper than, than what it's being bet on. So that could be something that is done in the future.
Yeah.
Same with the painting.
Well. The other thing, yeah, I think this is really high and I understand that it's a small job, but there's a lot of people out there that have, that are handy men or women or persons that maybe, you know, independent contractors, contractors, if we put something out, I don't know if we're allowed to do that. But the other thing is, I do have concerns about safety. I really do. We don't have security cameras. If they were up, that would be different. I mean, we don't have them, well. And then are we, you had mentioned something about automatic locks. At certain times, they were, they would be on a timer.
So what I explained about the security before was that Chris Bailey has already been in the progress of creating security cameras that we already have the hardware or not the hardware, we don't have the actual cameras installed yet, but that's part of a project that is ongoing. So within the building, we already have the lines that attach to the cameras. And so the plan is, I'm not trying to harp back to it, but like I explained in the last meeting about it is we'll either be using Chris Bailey's plan for his camera location, which would service the bathroom as there would be two outside of the utilities garage. Or I got a quote independently for two cameras, one right underneath where the two doors are located for the bathrooms and then one on the exterior above the garage. So you would have multiple angles for security. In terms of the doors, the doors would be on the same system that our key fobs currently operate on. So we would, depending on who wants access or who needs access, would be able to access the bathroom if it's closed. But the purpose mostly of doing that is so that at certain times, like seven PM in the summer, those doors automatically lock from the outside. So no one else can, we can't, I mean, I'm not going to prosecute a homeless person before they do something wrong, but that would eliminate some of the potential issues of someone camping out in there after dark.
It's not even that. It could be teenagers vandalizing. I mean, there's all kinds of things that could happen.
What kinds of things could happen?
Yeah, they do, but. Okay, I guess that's it for me.
Sure, thanks. Well, thanks for getting this quote. I worked with Chris on the proposed model motion with the footnote that I'd be opposing it tonight, which I am. And so I won't go on about why, other than I want to say a couple of things. One, you'll notice the model motion has the words to appropriate. I want to be clear, this was not budgeted. And that's okay, but this would be budgeting it. I do recommend it come from the general fund because it is part of the Township Hall, which seems a more appropriate use rather than construing it as kind of part of a park, even though I know it's designed to support people who are coming to the park. I'd say the twenty seventeen addition, there are a few things about that design that I don't know were very well thought out. I think the placement of these bathrooms is one of them. It, I, you know, support, we want to get in the business of providing public bathrooms, certainly. I have a ton of compassion for homeless people. I have a ton of compassion, you know, for anybody needing to find a safe place to use the restroom. I, I think that crawling around, around our equipment, back behind our cars, back around the building, it's, it's not that I'm trying to demonize anybody who needs to pee. I'm just saying, like, having more people walk around our equipment and our vehicles is something that's not necessary. I think there's ways we could provide a bathroom. I know the Flyers has been providing a porta potty for years. I know that there's other ways we could do a, you know, different installation. If we're really talking about a pavilion or something out there, you know, could be even a more permanent, you know, kind of building designed for it. I just think that this particular area in the back of Township Hall where we're moving our vehicles and people is just, was a poor choice when it was designed. Question about the video. It says twenty-five hundred dollars for the fire alarm permit, drawings included for the permit and inspection approval. The fire alarm permit, would it not just be, because one of the things that was undone was the fire alarm system? So, so when I came in and, and thank you to Think and Think for getting some of our money back on that front. But the fire alarm system is done now. And so wouldn't it just be kind of extending it? I, of course, don't know how this stuff works. But why does that cost twenty-five hundred dollars to just add one alarm to an existing system?
Well, when I spoke with Phoenix Contractors, he did go in and he looked at other bathrooms to see how the fire alarm systems were set up.
The two new bathrooms with the showers?
Uh, yes, but they were, yes, back there. We used the ones back there.
Good.
But if you go back there, you can also see that all you've got is a box and some empty conduit. There is nothing, there's no wiring that's running through that box or anything. So it's a whole new system for it to come into compliance.
Okay, I'd be curious to get the chief's input on it if you haven't already because we already had to add on a second system to the old, Christie's remembering all of this. We already have kind of two systems, so I just want to make sure it's, I'd just be curious about the chief's input.
Yeah, I'm absolutely happy to ask, ask the chief.
Yeah, and again, you know, Phoenix, A three C and Phoenix, we did not bid them the first time we went out for this addition. And so I'll say I understand there is some benefit to working with somebody who's done the work before. But, but we, you know, we still have to.
Well, I'm really aware of the inclusion of these bathrooms in the design for the addition. I was serving a bathroom with the Parks Advisory Board. And we recognized way back in, I don't know, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, that if we were going to have a more active use park behind Township Hall, that providing a public restroom was an essential element of having a successful park. And at that time, that's when the designs were coming together, they, you know, we were just an advisory board. We just said, this is something we think is important to think about. And so it was included in the design, but it's never finished. And what we have now is kind of a shell of, for two public restrooms. And this is a proposal to use one of those spaces that was created. But it's just a rough, it's just a rough space. I think that's, if you've been in there, you can see, if you look around all of the stuff that's piled in there, that, you know, it's just really the stubs of the, whatever, the plumbing, you know, sort of sticking out of the floor, out of the wall. Same with the vent openings. I don't understand how all the plumbing works. But everything is there to be connected to. And so I think that's, that's the significant difference between this and a simple renovation of an existing bathroom. All of these permits and inspections and standards that we have to meet in order to be in compliance with the law, whether it's our own ordinances or the building codes. I think that's part of what the challenge is here. And I was stunned by the initial cost. I think originally, you didn't mention this, but originally you were seeking a quote for this sort of more heavy duty kind of fixtures. And that came back with a high price tag. And I think that, so part of what's represented here is a reality check, scaling back from that higher, much higher cost because that would have entailed not only the cost of fixtures, which was higher, but also relocating those stubs, those existing stubs that are in place because you'd have, they were in the wrong location for that kind of a fixture. So this, even though it's a high price tag that you were looking at, significantly reduced from those initial quotes. And I think also represents an effort to try and economize by removing things that were non-essential, like painting or the epoxy flooring. This is really a scaled back proposal. It's a high price tag, but I think it's not just a matter of looking ahead and seeing rising construction costs. I think we have to think of our role as providing a service to the public. And we have public restrooms inside the building and that's great. But we're essentially opening up a space to the public behind the building that's an exterior space. And we need to have a restroom. There has to be a public restroom to serve the people who will be coming and using that space. Part of what I think what Gem is looking at right now, and I think this is also involved with the next item on the agenda, the HVAC proposal, is going to reconfigure the space behind the township. I'm not sure that where things are. I'm not sure that where things are parked right now in terms of equipment is going to be where things are parked or stored outside going forward. That's actually a fairly easy problem to solve, finding a different space behind the building to store those items. In fact, it sounds like there's a proposal coming to relocate all of that equipment to someplace further away from the rear of Silo Township Hall. So I think there will be some attention paid to how to move from the public park to the bathrooms back and forth. I am looking forward to all of these improvements that people have been talking about, not just you two, but the other folks who spoke during public comments. I think there's a real excitement about having a more usable space for different age groups. But it's it's really not that usable if there's not a place for people to go to the bathroom. If they, especially after Township Hall closes at four o'clock, if someone's using the park or they're there on the weekend, there there needs to be a place where they can go, where they don't have to hop in a car and drive to McDonald's. So I think this is a an important step. It's an expensive, a more expensive step than I think most of us would, well, any of us would like. But it's the reality that that's how much it costs to do something. That's probably more than I should have said, but I'll turn to you.
The only thing I would like to make sure is somewhere, question on heat. I see nothing in this estimate. So if someone could make a note of a question, so when you get down to a nitty gritty again, ask about the heat.
It looks, it looks like there's no heat.
No.
No heat.
As I know.
They don't see anything in them in the bid, so it's a question to ask.
Do our pipes freeze?
And ventilation in there, I.
No, the pipes won't freeze because the pipes are also located within the interior walls.
And are we on septic here or municipal sewer?
We're on the sewer.
Wait, what?
We're 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 in the sewer district.
We are, okay, because that's important.
That was it, I just.
Let's see, Riser.
I I think there's like two questions. One, does this board or the future board, do they want to finish the bathroom at all? Or do they want to leave it not? So the threshold question is, do we want to have a finished bathroom there? And speaking for myself, I think we should have a finished bathroom at a park that we're trying to make our path ADA compliant, that we're going to have a natural play place gate, that there could be a pavilion, that I know that Murby's had these, these, I went to one of them about stars, and I know there's bats, and there's these other, there there's these other things. And, you know, we're we're going to have the border to border trail and a connector path. So this is going to be more of, I mean, we're going to have more of the public come in here to recreate, I think. I know the PPP committee was unanimous in wanting to get frankly both of them finished, but unanimous in 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 wanting to get the bathroom finished. So the the organization that cares most, but a lot about these things, is in full support of having that finished. I I I I I don't know that we have to deal with or can, I know that homeless people or people unhoused or people who use drugs, anybody can do anything anywhere. And I don't think we should plan with with that contingency blocking our vision to accommodate residents. I don't think that this Township Hall Park is a destination for transients who are just in the area. I know in Ann Arbor, they have public restrooms in the library, and they have them at Vandemere Park, and they have them at Gallup Park, and they have them at Almendinger Park, and they have them at Argo Canoe Livery. And 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 just because Ann Arbor does it doesn't mean we have to do it. But accommodating the public who want to use our parks is something that we should do, whether it's from the general fund or whether it's from the PPP millage, what I think will be appropriate. I I know EPC, EPC Township, other municipalities have parks with public restrooms. Some municipalities now have these what are called thrones, which is a public restroom that has, you know, water and things in it, so like.
Those make more sense to me.
But but just having something and 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 if I and I don't care if it's a throne. I I don't, I think it should be an ADA accommodative accommodative public restroom that people can use, that people that are there to use. We, it's almost seems silly to have two restaurants, rough restaurants, that's funny. I'm not going to eat there. And two restrooms that are rough plumbed for for these fixtures and should just let let it frankly languish. And I don't know, we can limit the hours. I I don't worry about untoward incidents occurring because we can have security systems, we can have the timing on the doors. I think it's going to be a destination for people who use our parks, not people who use drugs and need to take a nap somewhere. I I think, I I too have sticker shock, and I texted my own plumber, say, hey, is this something you can do? Or and he says, no, he's a residential guy, so. I I share your appreciation for the sticker shock. I I don't know how, I don't know what the hell to do about that. RFP or to reach out to Hutzle or to reach out to Mechanical or.
And are these all the costs too? I mean.
So but I guess the the thing is, is is getting that bathroom finished, something we even want to do. I do, whether it's general funds or PPP funds, but I don't know that the majority of this board wants to even finish that down. Whether it's thirty thousand or three thousand.
Good job.
But we know.
So good points raised by everyone. I agree with most of them. I agree that we have to provide an outdoor public restroom. I mean, I think that should be a priority. We have the existing structure in place to finish these two. We're only talking about one, I understand. But to build a freestanding structure in the park would actually end up being more expensive. And we have, it may not be perfect, but we do have these in place. And we could finish off one of them as proposed. I think it's something we need to do. I mean, Jessica, you offered valid concerns about the equipment and the cars in the back. But if there's a plan to possibly change the configuration of the parking in the back and the equipment storage in the back, that will help a little bit. I, um, and then I want to know, like, other communities have had to deal with the issues of safety, drug use. And maybe you could look into, how are other communities dealing with this, with their public restrooms in parks? I mean, others have to live intended with this issue.
I think the issue in Ann Arbor is that unlike what we're proposing, they don't have automatic locks on their bathroom doors. And I've worked at Toledo Metro Park, and we're not equipped to do what they do by any means, but they have their park rangers go around at night to lock and then unlock the bathrooms. So I think one of the biggest issues that we can avoid that Ann Arbor maybe hasn't, either they aren't going to or or looking at a different way of combating this issue because it's the difference between one bathroom and another bathroom is we can put something in place that locks them automatically at night.
But we'll have our building maintenance person check them to make sure they're empty, each night, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, that would be key.
I mean, so at seven o'clock at night, they're going to check for the doors are locked?
Well, no, we'd we'd have to come up with some protocol. Maybe Kevin was even doing that internally in our bathrooms. We all kind of check them.
Okay. But it's four o'clock, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the details. I'm just noting the township when we did get a building and Christie can figure it out if the board goes for it.
Has Ann Arbor had any problems with their public restrooms, John? Do you know, outdoors at parks?
I don't know. You know, I know people do use drugs in the library and, you know, like, call nine one one if that happens, but, you know.
And Christie's working on a proposal for Narcan.
Yep, and that's, I plan to bring it on.
But but those are like, it's such a different population. Like, like in Ann Arbor, there's all kinds of people, you know, the the, Ms. Hindle's right. They put people on buses and send them to Ann Arbor, and then a dip five oh one C three is give them tents, and 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 then they're downtown. I just don't know what that's going to be. This is a different location than than where, what those are.
Well, it sounds like some of their homeless encampment, very close. I mean, those are valid points.
Well, and I think the concern about safety events, I just.
I don't know how close it is.
It's it's not, people who, people who are unhoused aren't any more likely to have, I mean, I'm just saying, the concerns about violence and overdose, I think we share for people who are housed and unhoused, just any, any of that.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Well, so, what about this? Because, all right, this is, I would go for the three thousand dollars. That was possible. But since this is part of the building, building is under the utility director. He's done a great job with the inside. If you collaborated with him, and if the general fund is paying for this, then I think that our building man, our building director, under utilities should be involved. Now, I know, I understand we don't have a maintenance person right now, but we will eventually. And if we could get the cost down, and then also you had a question. There was something that you mentioned that Phoenix was supposed to do way back in the day that they didn't? Or something like that?
Yeah, we addressed it with Think and Think.
And it's already been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Fire, you had mentioned the fire, the fire alarm.
Yeah, oh, and the fire, yeah.
Fire alarm.
Issue, and we were, yeah. But that that's an aside.
Okay, but if we could get another quote, I mean, that we see, we're relying on a company to say, oh, this is the best quote, but is it? We don't know.
I think that's the, that's what we heard, is that they tried to get quotes.
To multiple other, other companies and gave us.
You said it to them, or how how does that process work?
So, and correct me, I'm, maybe I'm confused, but isn't that what we got approved in September? Was to go forward with this contractor so that they could bid this project out for us? Is that not what we got approved in September?
I I saw the ninety two hundred that I voted no on was for A three C.
To get the plan.
Right, to get the plans.
I think that was to get the plans.
Yeah, okay.
I think that was to to generate current code compliant plans so that somebody, an HVAC or mechanical contractor or electrical contractor can know what they have to do, build it to spec.
Have we gotten the plans back?
Yeah, I think they're, weren't they?
Yes, we, we found, and that's what they use is 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 for their their bid documents to make us send it out.
So so they prepared the plans, they sent, they sent out the plans to get quotes.
Correct.
People came, looked at the space, and they gave quotes, and this is, this is the best quote.
Yes.
And and as, as Chris already said, we, he has tried to have other companies come out here and bid this already this year and got no one to return the interest except for Phoenix.
That's correct, that's where I was going. It's difficult to get a general contractor to come out to bid on a bathroom.
And so what is the difference between what we did with like man's lumber? We didn't need, is it that we didn't need a contractor for that?
I think it has to do with.
You have to pull permits.
I think, I I think you need a licensed contractor to do some of the work and then pulling on the permits. And they're, it's a job that are subcode, but they, you just don't need to pull permits or get inspections, you know.
I mean, like when, when we do things for ourselves, and I'm just going to put this out there, we don't need to pull permits on our own work.
Oh, yes, we do.
Do we, we, the county, we do.
Yes, that's part of why this costs.
But that's a.
It depends on the work.
Right, so the work, it's a plumbing permit?
A licensed plumber has to be the one to do this work, just as, as far as I understand, because I read through some of the legislation to make sure that I was understanding, even if we were to rearrange the fixtures in the bathrooms here, a licensed plumber would still have to be the ones to do that. There's very little that we can do in-house legally.
The difference between new construction and renovating an existing bathroom where you're not changing the locations of things.
So this is considered new?
I think it's public because it's a public.
Yes, that's exactly, I should have said that. Because it's public, it's completely different and is under much more scrutiny.
And so on this first part, the ninety two hundred pre-construction design services, just to confirm that ninety two hundred, we've already paid. Okay.
Are we prepared to move the model around? I I mean, I am, but I'm also, would support trustee Carey's position that we find somewhere cheaper. So I don't know if if it has to, I would support this up to thirty thousand dollars from either Phoenix or an alternative and less expensive vendor. I mean, I I.
I think we would need to, just a process point, John. I think if you wanted to do a budget amendment up to a certain amount, that's okay. But but I think that we need to have a specific proposal, like this proposal or a different proposal that we authorize.
I don't, I don't think that we're we're focusing on what we've been hearing and what we have in front of us. This represents a a very diligent effort to find
I know, I know.
A contractor with bids and and, you know, trying to reduce costs. And I I don't think there's like somewhere else to go to get a a phantom lower cost.
Like a magic bullet.
Yeah, I I think, you know, the bullet is in front of us, we need to bite it.
Well, do you understand that Phoenix, probably, they're not going to be doing the work. They're the general, they're the plumber, hire the electrician.
They're the ones, they're the ones who got the quotes.
Yeah, we get that.
Okay, twenty seven hundred, we're paying them to do work.
They've taken out some of their fees, they've eliminated some engineering costs that were there originally. There's been economized, and this represents, as high as it is, an effort to reduce costs as much as possible.
What if it were to come out of parks PPP, is that prudent or no?
Or sharing?
Or an allocation?
That's how it was originally proposed.
What's your sense of that?
Clerk Flintoff proposed paying it out of the general fund instead.
My my thought was this, is it seems to me, I think, you know, we always want to use a special revenue source where it's appropriate. But in my opinion, this is really a general fund cost more appropriately because it's part of Township Hall. I think it's, it's it's not that, that it's not meant to be, you know, used by people who use the park, but when it actually comes to like building this building, our Township Hall, it seems much more appropriate, a one on one expense. The addition was done, you know, part of the fire department was done with one on one and fire funds. This building has been done mostly with one on one, some with water and sewer. But I just think it be, would become kind of odd if we have, you know, oh, thirty thousand dollars of Township Hall is built with, it seems more appropriate.
Okay, I I, I'm just trying to.
It's because it's part of this building, you know.
Well, I would propose that we vote on the model motion and see what happens, rather than just sort of batting this around all evening, we've got other things on the agenda. So I will make the model motion to appropriate thirty thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty six cents from the general fund fund balance to one on one dash two six five and authorize the attached proposal for construction and completion of one public restroom on the northwest side of Township Hall. Is there a second?
I would support it.
Okay, so moved by Hathaway, support by Riser. I I think we talked this through, why don't we call the roll?
Hey, Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flinton? No. Carrie?
No.
No?
Yes.
Motion passes for two.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to, uh, new business. First item is Township Hall HVAC study review. And I believe we have someone participating remotely who's gonna make a presentation.
Their name?
Uh, Caleb. Caleb, and I think Jan Culberson may also. Jan Culberson, I believe, is also going to participate. And Caleb was going to share, share screen.
Hi there, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, and let's see, I'm Caleb Klein, I'm a mechanical engineer at Inclination Engineering. I'm gonna try and share our screen here, it is, it is upgrading me to panelist, so we'll see if this works for everyone. Did that work?
Not yet.
Not yet, but it's going to.
Uh, I pushed that button, and then I push, uh, one more down here. There we go, okay. We are going to do. Thank you for your patience. So that, and see what happens.
There you go.
All right, and did it show up big screen or little?
Here we go.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, yeah, so I'm a mechanical engineer in Ann Arbor, uh, Inclination Engineering. This is a study about the replacement of the HVAC equipment, and I will go through it. So, the part of the building that we're talking about is the older part of the building, that's not the utility addition. And, let's see if I can get my laser pointer. Okay, so that's, uh, this dark portion over here, there are three rooftop units, one here, one here, one here. Uh, where you all are sitting is this lighter green rectangle, uh, for the meeting room. Um, that's served by this rooftop unit. So this project is to replace these three rooftop units. They are 25 years old and near the end of their life. Uh, for these two units outside the boardroom, the existing ductwork cannot be reused, uh, because of changes uh, in the energy and ventilation codes. And so it's not set up to just replace those rooftop units with new ones in place, uh, and have a code compliant system. Next page, there we go. Um, South Township has a commitment to, uh, energy efficiency as well as sustainability and reducing its greenhouse gas emissions. For that reason, the systems that we evaluated are going to use all heat pumps for their heating. The township purchases renewable energy credits through, uh, DTE Energy. And so any of that electricity used to heat the building, uh, and these all electric options is going to not contribute any greenhouse gas emissions, uh, to the buildings, from the building's use. Um, I submitted a full report and an executive summary in the attachments, and would encourage anyone to read those and reach out to us with questions. This is one summary table. Um, the costs here shown are construction costs after deductions for federal rebates and some state grants, uh, that the township has already been awarded, the, the, the state grants. The greenhouse gas emissions are for the whole building, and, um, that includes those uh, units that are on the utility addition that are going to remain. So, I wanna call your attention to, uh, we've got three different options, did I lose my laser? Here we go, three different options. Um, I selected out of the five that we looked at, uh, the top three. Um, the last grayed out column is just for reference, this is what the building would be if we used conventional gas-fired units. And so you can see we would have 38 metric tons per year of carbon dioxide, uh, emissions. Um, the system more than cuts it in half for the building. Um, the remaining 15 come from, uh, the existing rooftop units that we are not touching in this project, because they are newer. Um, there's a lot of cost and savings data in the report. In the interest of time, I'm gonna move on, and we can come back to this slide if we have questions, uh, later. So, the preferred option, um, from the facilities, um, subgroup that I was working with, the township, uh, was option four, that is a water source variable refrigerant flow. I'm gonna break down, uh, what that means. So, a variable refrigerant flow system, uh, is a refrigeration system-based system, uh, a lot like, um, an AC unit in your house, a split system that you might see on the wall. Um, you'll recognize this wall-mounted type, perhaps, um, you know, those are pretty common that you will see, you guys have one in the IT room. Um, typically what would happen is that this would run with refrigerant pipes to an outdoor unit. That would look a lot like your air conditioner at home, if you've got an air conditioner. Um, the difference for a variable refrigerant flow is that you have multiple indoor units connected to a single large outdoor unit. And so that is where the variable comes from, it shares the refrigerant, instead of just having each unit connected to a single outdoor unit. There are multiple indoor units connected to one, um, large compressor heat pump. Um, it allows for better heating efficiency, uh, in cold climates. In this case, we are talking about a water source, and that's what this picture is over here. Instead of having an outdoor unit, um, the unit would be indoors and connected to a geothermal well system. There are a lot of different types. Um, I mentioned this wall-mounted unit, because it's a common one that people see. Um, but there are ceiling cassette units that fit in a two-by-two ceiling grid, um, that look pretty slick, um, and can go in the middle of a smaller office. There are ducted units that would go above a ceiling and connect a ductwork to diffusers, where you wouldn't notice any difference, um, from the inside of the room, there's no aesthetic difference. Um, each of these units could have its own thermostat, which is a big selling point and benefit of this system. And so you would have a lot of different zones. Um, basically each enclosed office would have its own zone. Um, some of the larger spaces that are open, um, would be sharing a thermostat, which is expected, because it's, you know, one large open room. So basically, in this diagram, um, here's the Township Hall where you all are sitting, uh, to orient you. The, uh, each colored square represents its own thermal zone, meaning it has its own thermostat. The little red boxes are, um, this is again a rough sketch, but these are the little red boxes of those fan coil units. The ones that are connected to the dark blue are ducted units. Um, these little square ones are just, uh, those ceiling mounted. And I believe I have, yeah, one on the wall for the IT room. So the, um, that's the indoor portion of the system. The outdoor portion of the system is all going to be buried underground. And that's a ground heat exchanger, um, which is colloquially known as geothermal heating. So, three of the five options that we looked at, um, included a geothermal, uh, well field. Uh, in this schematic, you can kinda see pipes are buried underground in deep wells, they have loops. Um, water is pumped through that, that piping system, and heat is rejected to the ground or absorbed from the ground, um, in heating or in air conditioning. Um, this does require a mechanical room inside the building where the pipes enter, and where there would be some pumps, and potentially, uh, some heat pump equipment. And our plan was to use the south of the two exterior restrooms that you all have been discussing. Um, and I will show that on the next slide as well, I've got a site plan. So here's the site plan. Um, the pipes would come in over here, be buried under the parking lot, and the well field would go in the dirt area, dirt and grass area, um, right west of the utility parking garage, um, where it's now currently paved. Uh, it would take about six wells spaced 20 feet apart. There was some consideration that we wanted to think about, well, what happens when the remainder of the building, um, equipment needs to be replaced in the future? And so, we were reserving this area, uh, down here, in, under the parking lot for possible future. Um, it would be a relatively inexpensive, uh, insurance policy for the future to just bury a second pipe while we have that all trenched up. Um, that would prevent future, uh, cutting up of some of the, um, asphalt. Uh, this part would be done in coordination and before, um, improvements were done to the park entrance. Uh, that would be the best phasing, um, is, you know, do all this site work before that happens. Okay, covered that. Um, here were the three options that I had shown in that initial slide, uh, for lifecycle costs. Option two, four, and five. Um, here's a, you know, kind of a description of, of what those are. Um, but I'll say, the option four, which was the preferred option, had a slightly higher, um, initial cost than some of the others. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that one had a real, that one had this, that one had the lower initial cost, my apologies. Option five, um, had a higher initial cost, um, a lower replacement, and had a little bit better energy savings, and so it had a lowest lifecycle cost after 20 years. But that savings doesn't really accumulate until much later in the life. Um, you can see the lines stay pretty close together. Um, those two variable refrigerant flow systems need to be replaced about five years earlier. Um, than option five, and you can see that they, they don't start to separate all that much, and even here by the end, um, the total lifecycle cost is not super severe, um, extremely large to make that, you know, the deciding factor. Um, but we wanted to look at that, what that looked like over the long term, and I would say these are fairly close together. Um, it, the graph is a little bit deceiving in that it shows, you know, this big gap here. Um, that's closed at year 20, when you also have to replace that option five. So I know that was a, a quick presentation, but I was given about 10 minutes, so I wanted to whiz through that. Um, it's an extensive report, and I'd be happy to, um, discuss it further if people want. Um, and I'm, uh, open to taking questions and discussion now, and maybe Jan.
We also have, we also have Jan, um, I wanted to give her an opportunity to speak as well.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that the, some of the goals that we had were not only were making it efficient, uh, the, looking at the lifecycle costs, but also, um, looking at, uh, i- if we have to re, because we have to replace the ductwork, making sure that the indoor quality, indoor air quality, and also the controls, this option has, um, it, it has better controls and better, um, eh, more zones than the fan coil option. So, that was sort of the reason why we did that, and also with the more expensive upfront one with the fan coil option. Um, it, it, there are reduced zones, so you have less control over, um, the, uh, different spaces. So that's really, it was really the controls and a little less expensive upfront costs that had us, uh, choose that VRF system with the GEO. And the GEO is really a, an investment over at least 50 years. So you're really taking that system and, um, being able to do the indoor replacement of equipment once and still maintaining, uh, the value that you put into the GEO.
So, I, I, and we looked at just, you know, I mean, is the system that we have now end of life, I mean, is there a way to refurb, is there an option six that says, hey, we know that the system needs work? But is there some middle ground, where you say, look, we replace this X, Y, and Z, we still use some of the, the existing, uh, ventilation, for example, and hey, we can cut the cost by a third and extend the life of the system by another 10 years, something like that.
Yeah, there's not a lot to do to the systems. It's a very bare-bones system in that you have, you know, that packaged piece of equipment sitting on the roof, um, connected to the ductwork. Um, those rooftop units honestly are, I usually tell people, like, a life expectancy about 20 years. So you've got, and we did a report, I think, originally to replace these two, three years, two years ago, maybe. Um, so they've gotten, you know, they've definitely stretched out that life a bit already. Um, I'd be worried if you stretch it out too much longer, that you're gonna have a part fail. Um, it's a lot like an old car. You know, it's like, how much money do you wanna put into a 20-year-old sedan? Um, you know, when the transmission goes, at some point you have to say, okay, it's, it's not worth pumping more money into these pieces of equipment on the roof. Um, you certainly.
Yeah, one other thing, Caleb, I think people need to understand that this system is a, a very poor system for, uh, it does not meet outdoor air requirements. So that means the ventilation that people are getting is not up to current code. And that it, and, is so, not only do we have an extremely inefficient system, we have a system that really doesn't, uh, support, um, indoor air quality. And, and that has to do with health. And we're adding more people in our building, and when you add more people, you need that additional informa-, uh, ventilation even more.
A question I have, and, and maybe it's something we can see in our next presentation. Um, some of the cost subsidies would be, um, in the federal IRA, I believe. Um, so kind of a, I'd like to see those kind of itemized and understand what impact the new administration might have on those remaining available to communities, and how quickly they won't be going away.
Yeah, my understanding, and I'm not a political or funds advisor, um, my understanding is that those, um, the rebates that we looked at were not through state or, um, Department of Energy or Department, uh, EPA grants. Um, they are in the tax code, and so it comes through IRS requirements. Uh, a lot could be changed, but it would take an act of Congress or a much larger administrative push to change the setup as I currently understand it. Um, and so it is not, it is not a, uh, yes, it's not like an apply and, um, receive grant structure. They structured it, I think, for this purpose. Uh, they structured it through the tax code. And so, barring a change in the tax law and code, I think that those was, you could still be counted on.
Thank you.
Is this both a heating and an air conditioning system?
Yes.
And Jan was saying that our current ventilation in Township Hall isn't up to code, which I was aware of. That's what she said, very cool. How is your proposed system? How is it different from what we have in terms of offering better ventilation? And is there any filtration in the, um, circulating air? Are there filters?
Let me, um, let me see if I can go back a few slides.
Yeah.
Oh dear, I've got it in full screen mode. There we go, okay. Uh, let's see, this one.
He's gonna let me share again, Peter.
Did it, um, did it lose it? Can you guys see my screen?
Uh, we gotta share it again.
Okay, well, I can talk it through it too, if it doesn't work out here, sure. Okay, so the, um, thank you for asking. The current system doesn't meet ventilation code, because it, um, it actually closes off all airflow to assist, to, uh, to rooms to satisfy the various thermostats. So when it's the correct temperature, um, in one of the spaces, like in an office, there's a little damper in the, in the, um, duct, and it just closes, so it gets no airflow. Um, that's how the current system is set up. Um, in the new system, these fan coils that I drew out here on this diagram provide the heating and cooling. And there is a secondary system that does direct ventilation into each space. Um, and I believe I have, yeah, I have that as a drawing, um, in the full report, showing the ventilation system as well. So we'll be bringing in fresh air from outside. There is an energy exchange, um, where the ingoing and the outgoing air pass over a thin metal plate. So if it's cold outside, that cold air is preheated by the warm exhaust air leaving the building. Those two streams don't mix, but they exchange energy through a plate, uh, wall. And that fresh air is brought into each individual office space, so there's a fresh air inlet. And then there's an exhaust, uh, that will pull out of that, um, actually, the exhaust pulls out of the plenum. You, so above your ceiling, there's just a big open space. The benefit here is that, um, between individual offices, you're not recirculating the same air. So, fresh air comes from outside, goes into the office, uh, air is pulled from the plenum out and it goes outside. In your current system, when the, um, vents are open, um, you know, air blows into one office, circulates around, gets pulled back inside, goes back to the equipment, and then is blown back into another space and mixed altogether. Um, so that's an improvement, um, in that it's not sharing air, um, across spaces. Um, and so that, there's a little bit less need for that really high vent, um, filtration, because the air is coming right from outside. Um, there still are filters, uh, for dust in all of the, um, in all the units. Um, yeah, so that's one of the benefits, is there's a lot more direct fresh air.
Do the filters filter out viruses such as the COVID virus? Do the filters filter out viruses such as the COVID virus, airborne viruses?
The filters probably will not filter out like down to the viral pathogen level at each individual unit. What would happen is that, you know, if you had a, if you had a, uh, somewhere you could like see like a visualizer, like you could spray little dots that you could see. What you would see is inside an office, the fresh air coming in and diluting that, and then the exhaust air pulling it out. So instead of fil- filtering, we are diluting and ventilating.
And if we did this project, how long would it take? How disruptive would it be to the functioning of Township Hall?
Yeah, uh, we talked about this a bit. Oops, sorry. And Jan or Chris, if you wanted to jump in there too. I know you guys had some thoughts about the, the phasing. But yeah, it would require. Go ahead, Jan.
I think one is to talk a little bit about the overall process. So what this is, is this, Caleb's provided a study with different options for us to select an option. And then once we select an option, what we will be doing is preparing a request for a proposal for a design build solution based on this, the engineering schematic, basically. And in that proposal will also be a schedule. What we are anticipating is there's going to be a lot of disruption in the main part of Township Hall. And we were talking with Brandon about it, and there are some options, one to move people out, one doing, and what the phasing would look like would be to do the Township Hall first. That's a, that is an easier, you know, kind of one for one. Can reuse more of the ductwork, et cetera. It's a faster piece. And it can also be done within the time that we have for this grant, because we are, we are doing part of this work under our energy management grant from Eagle. The, the other parts of it will need to work with the contractor on to see how long folks would be out. Obviously, if you want to turn it into a nine-phase project, the cost will go up dramatically. So the thought would be either there's some work from home, set up some temporary workspaces in the, in the hall area, rent some temporary office space, bring in some temporary office space. So there is significant disruption because the ceilings have to come down and new ductwork has to go in as well as the equipment. So yes, this is, this is not an, an easy workaround like we did the lighting replacement.
How long do you expect? I know you don't have an exact timeframe, but six months it would take, three months?
If, if we wanted to make it as simple as possible, Jan, and be as cooperative as possible, how fast could it go?
I don't know, Caleb. It's sort of hard to say. I would, I would say it's at least three months. I, I mean, we do, and that wouldn't, that would be the this, the disruptive phase. The township, the Township Hall portion would be, you know, uh, up, up. It, it, that would be an easier part, and we're probably going to be, if we, this is the GEO option, so you can do the GEO bores first, order all the equipment, you know, get the, the new mechanical room up and running, do Township Hall, and then disrupt the rest of the, the folks. And so that whole process is probably a six-month process.
Trusty Noel, did you have more questions?
No, I'm okay.
I, I have a question. This is actually suggested by Matt Parks from OHM. What about the roof itself? The, assuming that the existing units come off, is that the time to deal with some of the roof issues we've, we've had? I've been, I'm guessing that the roof probably is due for replacements.
Yeah, we did not include the roof or roof replacement in the scope of work. If you choose the option, any of the geothermal options, there would not be any new equipment located on the roof. So what they would do is they would remove the existing rooftop units and put a cap over the opening right now, uh, and seal that all up so it's weather tight. And so it wouldn't, I think that you would, you should not replace the roof before you replace those rooftop units. But it does not need to be done at the same time or immediately after. It could be done at any point going forward in the future. I would not do it before you replace the rooftop units.
We, the township could continue to live with the roof that it has, you think, for some period of time?
I don't remember. It's been a while since I was up on that roof. I don't remember the shape of the roof is in, and it's not my, my area of expertise, so I don't, I can't state anything on how good the roof is currently, but this project would not affect the functioning of it.
Are there other questions?
I do. I have a question. So this would, this is geothermal, the geothermal, excuse me, at least the three, four and five. We're gonna need electricity to run this system or part of the system, because even though it's we're using ground heat. And so if we went with option four, the utility savings for electricity would be eight hundred dollars a year?
Let's see, and was that, I don't remember the right one.
And actually, the.
Yes.
Does anybody know what we're paying now? With this old system?
I think your total, I think your total is around twenty thousand a year. Does that sound about right? And that might be, I can't remember if that included gas and electricity. The main conclusion from the utility summary was that it was a small utility savings and a small difference in utility costs between any of the the various options that we looked at. It wasn't a a make or break decision point that, you know, one of them was going to be so much more efficient that it was going to pay for itself.
And, and part of that is, and I think this is, Jillian, what you're getting to is electricity is more, more expensive than, than gas. However, the, uh, because we're ma, we're choosing much more efficient equipment, we actually get a total savings. And we'll see, we, we didn't include any utility rebates for this project because the new ones haven't come out yet, and we may be able to do a custom application to get some energy savings or DTE rebates from it, but it would have to be a custom kind of negotiated rebate from them.
Are there any other systems out there besides geothermal that are as energy efficient? I mean, I don't know.
So the energy efficiency was, so option two on the table, am I still showing the table? Sorry, I can't see what it's presenting to me. I think so. So option two is air source. And so that would be an outdoor, large, what you would, you would look at and say, oh, that's a big outdoor air conditioner. You know, it looked like a condensing unit, but a larger tower. And the inside would be the same as option four, a variable refrigerant flow. The difference is we're going to take heat out of the air versus out of the ground. And so that has a much lower construction cost, total construction cost. But there are nice federal rebates for the ground source systems, such that actually by coincidence, the rounded construction costs came out to be the same for option two and four. If you look further down in the full report, it gives the full breakdown of the table of the costs and how much we're factoring in for grants and the rebates. So that was another system that we looked at. We looked at some air source heat pumps. Those would be, you know, a, a piece that would sit on the roof that would sit outside and not use the geothermal.
One, one of the options that you're not seeing here were, was a heat pump rooftop unit. But we kind of pulled that off the table because one, it is really not very efficient. Those new units are not very efficient, and you'd probably have to have a, a gas backup for it, which would then, you know, create, wouldn't move us toward that carbon neutrality pace. So right now, the most efficient and least lifecycle costs are using the geo exchange or the geothermal. And what's interesting about that is that's also what long-term building owners are choosing to do. The university is doing, is converting as many buildings as they can to GEO. The Ann Arbor Public Schools are also doing GEO. The city of Ann Arbor is investing in, looking at district GEO systems for neighborhoods and as many of their buildings as they can. So this is, this is a really good option. The other, as you look through sort of a decarbonization plan for the township, someone just mentioned the roofs. Yeah, we, if we do the GEO, we have more roof space for roof mounted solar if we choose to do that. And it would make sense to go ahead and do our HVAC replacement because it's needed to replace the roof, add rooftop solar, and then you're also decreasing your utility costs over time too. So that's sort of, you know, looking at a long-term decarbonization plan.
Yeah, the solar, and then we will be using only the the DTE, was it the green program? I can't remember the.
Yeah, it's my, it's my green power.
Yeah, my green power, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just sorry, but I mean, I've done a bunch of homework on this because I want, I go geothermal. I have a heat pump today. It's terrible. It does not save money. It's all a lie. I'm always switching to gas all the time because it's actually cheaper for me to run the gas than it is to run the heat pump. This is a new heat pump. And I looked into geothermal, and, and I, some of the friends who have it, the cost of ownership is, is, there's just less moving parts to it, and it lasts a lot longer. I mean, if you think about it, it's just a pump circulating water in the ground and back out of the ground. So it's going to cost you a little more. I mean, this is obviously given your decision, but just based on my experience anyways, geothermal, if you can afford it, the, the extra cost does make sense, and you know, you're going to be here. You're not selling the building anytime soon, I don't think, right? You're going to be here, right? So it's not like you're flipping it. So in that case, it probably makes a ton of sense for you folks. My experience, what it's worth.
Further questions for our presenters?
I just wanted to suggest, you know, in terms of making a decision, Jan and Caleb, I wonder if it might be helpful at some point for you all to be here on site, maybe with the new board members, where we can actually kind of walk through the building and, and actually look outside what we're talking about. I don't know if that might be a possibility.
Yeah, I think we could organize that. Chris has been our point of contact. And so, yeah, if you want to take a tour. I'm not sure how much there is to look at. It's a, it's a lot of imagining at this point. And so I encourage you to look through that report first, and kind of look at the, the floor plans are kind of my sketchup of, of what can be drawn. And I, I guess I didn't clarify this at the beginning, wasn't sure how much background everyone has. But the costs that you see here are not fixed costs. These are my engineer's estimate of probable cost. You know, this is me pulling data from a spreadsheet of national building costs for this area adjusted. These are not quotes. You know, this is like the very first step, and we're just going to pick which pathway do you want to pursue? We looked at five options. The group narrowed it down to three and picked the favorite, the option number four. And so I guess we're looking for board support to pursue further design and getting bids on that option. Not approving by any means the the numbers that you see here. These are just sort of rough estimates of cost.
I think it might be worthwhile if, you know, spend some time with the, with the overall reports, and certainly we can be, you know, in person and, you know, have a discussion of, of, around that.
And I think it's good that we have the incoming board members in the audience watching the presentation too. So I, I you've, you've been talking to the incoming board as well as the outgoing board. Well, if there are no further questions, thank you very much for your presentation and for, and to all of the people in the committee who have been working on this. I know Christie and Chris, who else? Brandon, right? Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you want to take a little bathroom break? Okay, so why don't we come back at nine thirty? And we'll continue on then with new business. We're in, we're in recess for five minutes. All right, we're reconvening. The next item on the agenda is new business item L two. This is a claim for payment for attorney services pursuant to side of Township Code two dash four two in state of Michigan law, MCL six nine one dot one four zero eight. This is a claim for payment for attorney fees by our deputy treasurer, Sandy Egler. Background describes the information and also the context. I would like to sort of handle this the same way that we handled the prior claim for payment attorney fees at our prior meeting. So first, we dealt with the question of any abstentions. Is there anyone among the board of trustees who would like to abstain?
Just to remind people, it's any member who has a real or perceived conflict of interest on the question shall state what the conflict is and that they request permission to abstain.
I don't see anyone raising their hand to abstain, and that's what triggers the abstention. It's not a question of other people thinking that someone should abstain. It starts with the individual who is abstaining. So seeing that we have no abstentions, then we move to the question of, if I understand correctly, and Raya, maybe you can state what the question is, make sure I get it right or we get it right. It's the question of whether the person who is asking for reimbursement of attorney fees has a reasonable belief that they were doing their job when the incident or the, whatever the action was that generated the investigation and litigation occurred.
Yes. And I think that's, that's part of it, but that's also why we put the full, at least in mine, I put the full in L three as pasted the full section two forty two. That is one part of it.
Okay, well, I thought that was the, the key question is whether the person who is requesting the, either the reimbursement or the appointment of an attorney believed that what they were doing, reasonably believed that what they were doing was part of their job.
That, that's the base question, yeah. Did the employee have a reasonable belief? Well, could I just offer two others?
Sure, go ahead.
Because we do have this, when, when I saw that Will proposed an approval for this for L two, I put the, because my recommendation is for denial, I put L three. So I am kind of speaking to that only, I mean, because it's really opposing recommendations on the same question, but in the resolution I provided. Opposing recommendations on the same question, but in the resolution I provided um that um trustee Noel and I um developed to really kind of read things. Um. One, um, that the person needs to be acting on behalf of the townships. I find out she was acting on the, on behalf of herself as an individual in particular because of the Lhasa independent contractor issue. Two, section two forty two B applies only to quote, whenever a criminal action is commenced. In this case, there was no criminal action commenced. The prosecutor declined the request for a warrant. No charges were filed. And three, um, Will's point, the reasonable basis for believing that the employee was acting within the scope of their authority as a SIO Township officer or employee at the time of the alleged conduct.
There are further comments?
Motion. Do, do, I'm sorry, do you want to have a motion on the table before you have your discussion?
Oh, yeah, that's what we did last time.
I'm going to move uh the L two motion
to approve the attached resolution to approve claim for payment for attorney fees.
Well, yes, but with respect to the attached resolution, with respect to number two, uh, at the bottom, deputy treasurer incurred legal fees as a result of the sheriff's investigation arising from the allegations that proved insubstantial. I would like to strike uh that proved insubstantial, that just say arising from the allegations.
So where's this on page?
Do we have a second? First of all, just pass this by him.
I will second.
And then I would move, I, I don't want to get into the substantiality uh of, of, of the allegations.
John, could I, just for the record, can I get your proposed edits on your resolution?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See, on page two, the penultimate paragraph, starting with whereas arising from the allegations that prove insubstantial. I would move to strike that proved insubstantial because it kind of talks about how it ended up rather than the issue at hand, which to me is whether to indemnify. So I would move to strike those three words.
That proved insubstantial.
Right, that's, that's.
I would support.
That's, that's opinion. That's superfluous, superfluous in my opinion. So I would move to strike that. But then I would move the model motion. And uh, I don't know, it, we would, and, and, and why I'm doing this, because there was a, a, last month, I also um seconded and supported the, the motion that we did this for, uh, for trustee Carrie. Um, I realize that in this case, charters weren't brought, but I, I, I do, uh, you know, I, I think to be consistent with what we did for uh another o- official, we should do it for a then deputy. Uh, she was the deputy, uh, only the deputy treasurer, but also the deputy supervisor, but.
And finance director too.
The report.
Covered the whole range of time.
The, the report, the, the police report talks about, it has her title in there and it talks about the scope of what she did. You know, it talks about uh SIO Township Deputy Director and it talks about her, her, um, her, her role within the township, that SIO Township Deputy Treasurer. Um, and also, and when you look at when I look at, everyone can have their own opinion in this regard. If a criminal action is commenced, and what does it mean to commence an action? Is it the filing of charges? Is it the filing of a police report? Is it a police officer talking to you or detective talking to you? Uh, and, and then it also, but that MCL six ninety one dot fourteen oh, oh eight, it talks about furnish the services of an attorney to advise the officer or employee as to the action and to appear for and represent. So getting advice from an attorney when you're the subject of a criminal investigation or criminal action or something that pertains to your, the scope of employment is something that MCL six ninety one dot fourteen oh eight supports. It's something that I believe our SIO Township Code two dash forty two supports. It also talks, uh, our code is even stronger. Our ordinance that says shall pay for uh the service of an attorney to advise the officer or employee. This is not an expense that we're going, that's going to go on. This is an expense that has been borne, it's paid out, it's four thousand dollars. It's consistent with what we did two weeks ago, and I'm going to support motion L two.
And I would just like to add that um I looked at this question of uh the precedent by what we did before in relation to um Sandy's situation. Um, seventeen thousand plus of the money that we authorized um in the, in uh trustee Carrie's situation um was for attorney fees that were after the police investigation started but before charges were brought. So it's consistent with that.
And I was deemed a suspect from the beginning. That's why the police knocked on my door on a Sunday night.
If I, if I could speak to the resolution, um, I'm supporting the resolution to deny claim. I think it's important that this board make clear that we denied this claim. I think it's a false equivalent to say that the claim that was brought for Jillian where the victim is Will Hathaway is the same as when the victim is SIO Township for the allegations of embezzlement of public money. These, these are two different things. And in fact, I drafted this denial when I was drafting the recommendation to approve buildings because I do think for these, we want to be consistent. I would say, um, you know, some differences. Jillian immediately um reached out and asked the township to provide or furnish attorney services. The township was unable to do so because of the conflict of interest with the supervisor as the victim. And also, um, the insurance company denying it because it was, one, a criminal action and, two, they found the township experiencing a loss. In this case, deputy treasurer Egler did not seek out attorney representation from our township attorney, which suggests to me, and a year has passed um since these expenses. Um, further, when you look at the nature of what's actually um happened and not just what's alleged, but what this board took action on um and dealt with in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Um, even the memo that deputy treasurer Egler provided to us states that she was acting as an independent contractor for Lhasa, an independent agency, billing Lhasa, an independent agency. That is not in her role as deputy treasurer or employee of SIO Township. I would say, John, that a criminal action being commenced must mean something and that I would um suggest that it means charges are filed. Um, I think that if there's a different definition um in the law, then, you know, I'd like to know what that is, but a criminal action commencing um I believe is criminal charges. Um, we have standard forms that employees use to report times, standard protocols to follow. These were not followed. This is well documented. Um, when I was interviewed by the police, I provided all of these, the timeline of all of this and um as I would for any claim of, of wrongdoing um at the township. So I think that um these are actually different as can be, and I think it is important to just clearly state on the record why we're denying this.
I'd love to follow up with a few other comments.
Trustee Noel.
Um, so our ordinance to fo- two dash forty two, section B does state that the employee has to have a reasonable basis for believing that he was acting within the scope of his authority at the time of any alleged conduct. In this case, Sandy was acting as an independent contractor for Lhasa. In her capacity as an independent contractor for Lhasa, she was not employed by SIO Township. And although the typical um definitions that attach to being an independent contractor would apply here. And the fact that she was an independent contractor is mentioned twice in the police report. Um, so I think she does not have a reasonable basis for believing that she was working for SIO Township when she was in fact working as an independent contractor when she was working for Lhasa.
And insofar as she was an employee as documented, there were times, beginning in June twenty nineteen, where she was documenting on her SIO Township timesheets when she was out at Lhasa, and then that stopped. There were also over twenty years where Sandy Egler, as one of the highest paid senior employees, never, ever, ever earned time and a half. And then suddenly, forms were being submitted, modified and changed so that the it became an overtime form. Those accrued, Rebecca flagged it, David Rowley corrected it. We flagged it and it kept accruing and accruing. And when I realized that this was a growing financial and legal liability, I consulted with Bill Thacker, who wrote the confidential memo to the board and the closed session that we had on that matter. It continued after that for months until finally in June twenty twenty three, we changed the personnel handbook to make clear that political appointees are exempt from the FLSA. But these are not insignificant amounts of money.
But that's such a random question.
Yeah, this is, you're litigating, you're litigating.
What it, what it has to do with, is I, what it has to do with is that there are standard forms and protocol for how these were reported, and I don't believe, I do not find that she had a reasonable basis for believing she was acting within those norms when they were so wildly outside of anything we'd ever seen.
That's a valid point.
I know it is.
You know, we have refined over the last few years our processes, our forms, as we have noticed questions. What was done before was the process we had. It was not done as a fraudulent thing. And now, all of a sudden, I can understand clarifying it. But now it's being sort of stated that fraud was committed. Sandy Egler has never stolen a penny from this township. Never. And I want to tell you, if things didn't add up and we were twenty five pers- twenty five cents off, guess what? We found it. Because it wasn't going to go any further until we found it. That's the kind of employee that she's always been. And now I believe we treat everybody equally. I understand the clarification and the conversation and the information that has just been presented. But I believe Sandy should have her, uh, illegal fees reimbursed. I'm sorry, we treat everybody the same moving forward as what you just stated, Jessica. The process, then by all means, follow it going forward.
The indemnification provision requires the, the person to meet certain criteria. And I think that's what she's saying i- in her opinion. It, the situation doesn't substantiate a belief that Sandy was acting within the scope of her regular township duties because, or township authority, I should say, because she apparently had changed timesheets regarding overtime, comp time, over a period of time when that wasn't our norm. That wasn't the way the township had been doing it for years and years.
I don't believe she ever just did it. There was discussion trying to redefine those.
Do you recall this, that discussion?
I can't recall every discussion I've been involved in over the years. I'm saying she is not a thief.
I'm not, no one is saying that, by the way.
Oh, I, I hear it implied.
Well, we are saying maybe she doesn't meet the requirements for reimbursement on the township under the township indemnification policy, but we're not, uh-uh. I don't hear that coming, that we're not saying she's a thief, but we're not saying there's fraud. We're saying, here's our ordinance, here are the requirements under the ordinance, and let's look at that with an open mind. That's all.
Right.
I guess I'd refer to my, our attorney, our legal counsel. You're not legal counsel. You're, you're a legal person, not our legal counsel, but I, I want to give you that caveat. So I would say, Ryan, what, what, what say you? Was, was she acting in the office of, of SIO Township Business?
That, that's not my decision.
That's a policy question.
Well, it's, it's not, it's a judgment that we as board members have to make in voting on this question, whether we're going to pay this claim. And I, I, I hear loud and clear, Kathleen, or trustee Noel, that you feel strongly that, um, or you to, to you, it seems clear that she was not with acting or, or not justified in believing that she was acting as part of her job, the scope of her job for SIO Township.
Through my lens, as reading this as an attorney.
So I, I have a different point of view. Donna has a different point of view. I, I hear trustee Riser has a different point of view. I haven't really heard your point of view.
Well, we set precedent, that's, that's the challenge. We already set a precedent, and we set precedent on whether, you know, when we start paying attorney fees and that we just pay fees. We don't say, hey, we'll provide legal counsel. We just pay whatever fee is, is personal. Well, that's obviously not, was not the outcome, right? And that's going to be ongoing. And I'm not going to comment on that. That's, that's, that decision done, made and gone. The question, the point is that it set a precedent, and I, I made that really clear in, in an email that I sent to all of you. That was my primary concern. And once you, once you open this can of worms, it's going to keep, keep going and going. So that being said, you know, I can't sit there and, and now, all, all this is hearsay to me, right? I can't sit there and say whether she did or she didn't, or that was yes or that was no. It's, now I just know that I had a person who was, had, 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 was accused of a crime. Uh, she claimed that she was under, you know, working under the, of the interests of, of SIO Township. I don't know whether she was or she wasn't. Right? It's, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. I hear what Will's saying and Donna. They all equal up to me, right? So I had to, I mean, really, I mean, it's, let's call, call that all zero, right? So now I just have to look at precedent and what precedent was set.
We'd have to look at our ordinance.
I have looked at the, I have.
The language.
I have one of the.
And the language, and the language of the resolution.
I read rhetoric language all day long.
And the res- and the resolution that approved um the payment prior also had specific reasons. So I'll, I'll just say, I, I think that the resolution, we, there's a motion by Riser and support by Hathaway. I think this resolution um does not hold water. Um, I will be opposing it tonight. It's not well thought out and I think creates a bad precedent. Um, I think this is well thought out. I think it is well documented. Every single piece of paper um backs this up and, and this is um more of the truth. But, you know, the resolution before us tonight is John's, so.
Are there further comments?
Just, you know, um, as far as her not being able to hire attorney until a criminal action is commenced, if that means charges, that means someone would have to sit back, not get a lawyer, wait till they're charged with a crime prior to the lawyer being able to represent them on their behalf. It seems uh a bad policy to not engage the services of an attorney when you're under investigation, when he or she is most needed. And with respect to the, um, with respect to the, to gravamen of the effect. And with respect to the, um, with respect to the, the gravement of the offense that she was alleged to is like double dipping, getting paid for Lhasa and getting paid for Sciop Township. That's township and not that Lhasa is this separate thing that Sciop Township government isn't a part of structurally anyways.
Lhasa's separate.
But, but my point is, but Lhasa while separate involves necessarily Sciop Township residents. So, but even if it were this separate thing, if it, let's say if we're Home Depot, the, the, the essence, she was working at Home Depot or something. But the essence is that she was also getting paid while working at Home Depot as a Sciop Township, uh, you know, a, a treacherous. So the gravement, the essence of it is double dipping, stealing from Sciop Township residents. So I, I, you know, I supported the, the prior one and I'm going to support this one because we want our board members, we want our officers to know that when they come under criminal investigation or attack or charges for doing something within the scope of their employment or what they believe to be the scope of their employment, we're going to have their back as two dash forty-two and MCL six ninety-one, provided.
And given that, why don't we call the roll so we can move along in their agenda?
John, do you want to read your resolution?
No, I, I, it's not my resolution. It was, I moved it. Yeah, I moved it, but.
Do you want to read the resolution?
The entire resolution?
That, that is our, what we did last time.
All right, I will do it. Whereas Deputy Treasurer Sandy Egler has submitted a claim for payment to Sciop Township reimbursement of her attorney fees pursuant to Sciop Township Code of Ordinances two dash four-two incurred in. And whereas MCL, uh, MCL six nine one dot one four zero eight states in part two, if a criminal action is commenced against an officer, an employee of a governmental agency based on the conduct of the officer or employee in the course of employment, if the employee or officer had a reasonable basis for believing that he or she was acting within the scope of his or her authority at the time of the alleged conduct, the governmental agency may pay for, engage or furnish, furnish the services of an attorney to advise the officer or employee as to the action and to appear for and represent the officer or employee in the action. An officer or employee who has incurred legal expenses after December thirty first nineteen seventy-five for conduct described in this subsection may obtain reimbursement for those expenses under this subsection. Three, a governmental agency may pay for, engage or furnish the services of an attorney to advise an officer, employee or volunteer of the governmental agency and to appear for and represent the officer, employee or volunteer in connection with civil or criminal litigation or an investigation or proceeding if the litigation, investigation or proceeding involves the officer, employee or volunteer as a result of his or her conduct in the course of employment with or actions taken on behalf of the governmental agency. And whereas Sciop Township Code section two dash four-two states pursuant to section eight of Public Act number one seventy of nineteen sixty-four, MCL six nine one dot one four zero eight, the township authorizes the indemnification of past and present public officers and past and present employees while acting on behalf of the township within the scope of their authority as stated below. One, whenever a claim is made or a civil action is commenced against any past or present officer or past or present employee of the township for injuries to persons or property allegedly caused by the officer or employee while acting within the scope of his authority, the township shall pay for, engage or furnish the services of an attorney to advise the officer or employee as to the claim and to appear for and represent the officer or employee in the action. The Board of Trustees may compromise, settle and pay the claim before or after the commencement of a civil action. Whenever a judgment for damages is awarded against an officer or employee of the township as a result of a civil action for personal injuries or property damage caused by the officer or employee while in the course of employment and while acting within the scope of his authority, the township shall indemnify the officer, employee or pay, settle or compromise the judgment. Two, whenever a criminal action is commenced against a past or present officer or past or present employee of the township based upon the conduct of the officer or employee in the course of employment, if the employee or officer had a reasonable basis for believing that he was acting within the scope of his authority at the time of the alleged conduct, the township shall pay for, engage or furnishes, furnish the services of an attorney to advise the officer or employee as to the action and to appear for and represent the officer or employee in the action. Whereas Sandy Egler was appointed Deputy Treasurer in November twenty twenty-one and has been employed by Sciop Township since November nineteen ninety-one. And whereas the alleged crime for which Deputy Treasurer was investigated was submitting her time sheets, a task that occurred as a required part of her duties as a township officer and employee and that Ms. Egler completed this task according to instructions and at the direction of her supervisors at the township. And whereas the township has furnished, engaged or paid for the services of attorneys when prior claims and actions have been brought against township officials. And whereas to date, the township did not furnish or engage the services of an attorney for this action, obligating the township to pay for the attorney services. And whereas Deputy Treasurer Egler incurred legal fees as a result of a sheriff investigation arising from the allegations and has requested reimbursement of these past expenses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sciop Township Board of Trustees finds that the allegations made against Deputy Treasurer Egler and the resulting investigation by the Washington County Sheriff arose from her actions as a township officer and employee. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees finds that Deputy Treasurer Egler had a reasonable basis for believing that she was acting within the scope of her authority in the course of her employment at the time of the alleged conduct. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees determines to pay attorney fees for the representation of Deputy Treasurer Egler in defending herself. And be it finally resolved that the Board of Trustees approves payment of four thousand dollars of such attorney fees incurred as detailed in the October thirty first memo and accompanying attorney letter submitted by Deputy Treasurer Egler.
I just have one small suggested amendment. The second to last whereas, and this is to your earlier point, John. I, I would expect a township employee concerned about an allegation brought against them that they might reach out to our township attorney for advice or counsel or to our insurance company. Um, one of the whereas that Will copy and pasted from Jillian's is this, whereas to date, the township did not furnish or engage the services of an attorney for this action, obligating the township to pay for the attorney services. One aspect of the situation that's different is, what I think is more accurate is to date, the township was not asked to furnish or engage the services. That it's been a year, the township attorney, township insurance company, this has never come to the township. So I, I appreciate, you know, I, I don't know if you want that part to be accurate, if that matters to you, but I just want to state that is one key difference.
I agree.
It's just not, you know.
Would you agree to delete that whereas clause? It doesn't really add that much.
Or just even clarify was not.
Has not, or to date, the township has not furnished.
Has not been asked to, is.
Yeah.
And I, and I say that because that clause that Will copy and paste it was intended to reflect before with Jillian that she had asked for, we had submitted twice to insurance. That should always be our preferred is to have our township attorney provide representation, submit to insurance. This should be a last resort. And I just want to be clear on the record that on this one, number one and number two, we're never.
But we're being asked now, so I.
We're being asked to reimburse, we could also choose to put it to insurance. We can't go back in time and notify the Fink's that Sandy has a legal concern.
In that whereas clause, it says obligating the township to pay for the attorney services.
That was only because insurance and our township attorney wasn't available.
I, I, I think that, I think that the ordinance and state law obligates us.
That's what I think. I mean, I, the indemnification provision and state statute should control, but.
I think this is nitpicking really.
No, listen, I, I, no, listen, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to garner broad support for this, whether, whether it will or not. And I, I'm open to, you know, the, the liberative process.
I mean, that's all. I mean, I, I, I still think it should be denied, so it's, it's not that you're going to win my vote, John. I'm just suggesting to make it a little closer to accurate.
Well, does it really change the resolution if we just delete that whereas clause?
It doesn't really change it.
Okay, I, I moved to strike, I would be okay striking that.
So take out that whereas clause entirely.
It's more accurate.
Yeah, there's, it just makes it a little less inaccurate.
Okay, so with that modification to the resolution and the prior modification to the resolution, um, let's call the roll.
Okay, so the resolution to approve claims for payment for attorney fees as modified, Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? No. Brzezow?
I'm going to put a caveat on there.
For our rules of order, you have to vote yes or no at this point. Truly, I'm dead serious.
You can't really.
You have to say yes or no.
Oh, I was going to say yes or no.
Say, just say, say yes or no. No, I really don't.
Yes, you have.
No, I really don't.
I'll get into whether you have any.
Well, let's not argue, let's just continue the roll.
Carrie?
No.
Noel?
No.
Okay, um, resolution adopted four to three. Sorry, I wasn't trying to be rude, because it's when it's kind of called.
Can I, I make my comment now?
You can ask our facilitator.
Sure, now, now, two, two things. I, I frankly, I, I, I think Sandy, I, I'm going to give my opinion from what I understand. Sandy Egler is a bully, so I, I get all that. But my, my concern was here is if we don't pay her, she's now going to sue us for the money. And then we're going to have to pay attorney fees and pay her the money. So then we're just going to be out more money. So I just, so we just call it a day now.
I would suggest you not wonder about this out loud in a public meeting.
Yeah, well, let's, I don't mind. Let's, let's talk about this, let's talk about this other context. Um, okay, so then we're moving on. Um, I think I, I would suggest that item L three is, is sort of moot at this point because we have approved payment.
Yeah.
Um, it may we simply.
I'll make a motion to table this until November twentieth.
Okay.
Table what? I'll second.
Well, what, what are you going to do with it in November twentieth?
So it's a motion by Flintoff, support by Carrie. My motion was to table L three to a few, to our next meeting.
It's not that confusing, guys.
Well, it is a little confusing because it's being tabled to something specific as if it's going to be taken up again.
Well, we can't remove it because we've already approved the agenda. So we have to vote on it.
And we can table it without putting it to a date certain, which makes it sound like the next board is going to take it up.
Right. Exactly what's going to happen.
I'm just saying, I can't, I cannot say what the new board is doing. I am telling you my motion is to table L three until our next regular meeting, November twentieth.
I'll support it.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yeah, Carrie.
I'm going to get a support in tonight and.
We have a motion by Flintoff, support by Carrie. I don't support tabling it to a date certain because that implies that it should be taken up. And I believe this matter is settled. I think it's a mistake to bring it back up again at the next meeting. So I won't support tabling to a date certain. Any other comments?
All the question?
Well, you can call the roll if there's no further amendments.
Riser?
No.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brzezow?
No.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion fails, three to four.
I would suggest that we move on to public comment.
I don't want to lose my time listening to you, seriously.
What a loser. Okay.
Vote dash.
So why don't we proceed with public comment? If people have public comments that they would like to make, please approach the table. Any person making a public comment has three minutes. It seems we have a public commenter roaching the table. Will, please serve it to our times of war again. Trustee Riser.
Sure.
For the record, what people may or may not have seen on camera is that Mark Brzezow just left the room before a public comment. On his way out, he said, why would I want to listen to anything you have to say? That is the essence of his character. The man has proven himself a coward. And we are lucky to be rid of him. Laura Hindle made a point at opening public comments about the dangers of a public restroom, an unmonitored public restroom. We live on Zebra Road and I have found heroin syringes in our backyard. I have found them in our front yard. And reporting it to the sheriff, uh, I was informed that there have been a couple of overdoses in the area. So as you go forward with this bathroom, understand that the drugs are here. It's not ipse, it's not Detroit. The drugs are here and it's right next door to Township Hall. So you need to be aware of that and consider that as you're making preparations for this bathroom. Township Attorney Fink, did we just establish as a precedent that legal fees can be covered at accusation rather than at charges? Does the, does the legal representation threshold now start at an accusation?
You don't have to answer on the spot, you know that.
Isn't the back and forth, Rob? Rob, remember your questions are to be directed to the board as a whole.
Thank you, Rob.
Is there anyone else present in the hall who would like to speak during public comments?
I would, I'll pick up on something that Rob just brought up about the bathroom. It's like we've been hearing about bathroom all night tonight. Hey, we're the only thing on the unfinished business, so we had to exhaust it. My comment on it is that bathrooms are great, good to have. Um, I would have appreciated as a new person, um, the opportunity to actually weigh in on it because of, uh, uh, some of the discussion I heard, I think they were really good points. Um, I don't think all the options and alternatives have been explored. Um, so that was one, that, um, I, I think there could have been more brainstorming and, and more discussion of alternatives. Um, the second part of that bathroom decision is the devil's in the details. Uh, to Rob's point, um, whether it is unmonitored, whether it's cameras, whether it's cleaning, um, access, those are all things that this board is going to be responsible for. And, uh, the PPP is an advisory board. They made a recommendation, um, I think they, um, did a fine job of presenting it, but they're not on the hook. Um, this board will be on the hook for, um, problems and for ongoing budget requirements. And when you look at the number of things that are potentially ongoing budget requirements, they're there and we'll end up having a budget line for outdoor bathroom. So real disappointed in, um, not the decision to have a bathroom, but how we're going to get to it. Um, and my last comment tonight is, um, I do acknowledge that there's some folks that will be leaving the board. Um, I appreciate, um, their efforts, their contributions. Public service is not always fun. As Mr. Hathaway would probably recognize and, and Mrs. Palmer. As Mr. Hathaway would probably uh recognize and Mrs. Palmer. Um, but I look forward to joining it. And so uh, thank you for those and for being on the board and serving with Kathleen and Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Hello, Kathleen Brand again. Um, these are comments I would have shared with trustee Brzezo had he stayed. Um, he's missed three months of time. Uh, it's only fair to the taxpayer that he donate his salary back to SiO Township.
Yeah.
Uh, but he, uh, he's not here. The residents should know that they're paying for something they didn't get. Uh, he chose not to face residents in his last meeting. Uh, make your own uh determinations of his character. But I would ask him, if he were here, to donate that salary back. It would slightly offset the decision you just made.
Thanks. Thank you, Catherine.
President, you would like to speak during public comment?
Actually, my main point is, the voters got it right. They didn't want to be a part of our board, and they got it right in ignoring all of Supervisor Hathaway's efforts to smear and, and every other slimeball move for our clerk and our supervisor-elect. The voters got it right, they could see right through you, just like we saw through you tonight. Brzezo is nothing more than a vote dash. He needs to come in to help you because you needed that vote. It's the second time you've done that since he lost the election. So the voters got it right. We don't want someone in the board that treats people that way and that is so disrespectful for the residents that he should be serving. The voters got it right, and you got it wrong. That will be your legacy. Long ago.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone participating remotely who would like to make a public comment?
Sure, please raise your hand. First up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by David Reed.
Hey, good evening all. Uh, I hope you have a wonderful week. Wanted to thank Rob for saying exactly what I was feeling about our trustee Brzezo. Also was remiss in congratulating our clerk in another successful, uneventful election in which uh no one ever gets credit for everything going well. So congratulations, I think Diane Benson was the one who remembered, and I think we all should be a wee bit more thankful in the fact that nothing happens during our elections. And uh more, most importantly, I want to congratulate and welcome the new board. Yeah, I, I can't wait for uh things to change in terms of tone and transparency in a couple of weeks. Congratulations on your victories, and uh we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is David Reed. Hi, David.
Hi, David Reed, Township President. Um, a couple of things. From the discussion tonight, it seems obvious to me that none of, or probably none of the board members have built a house recently in SiO Township. Um, thirty thousand dollars for finishing a bathroom is, is really nothing. Um, number two, we built, my wife and I, Sandy and I have built two houses in the last twenty-seven years in SiO Township, and both of them have used geothermal. In our first house, the geothermal system was fifty percent more than the electric, the electric-based forced air system, but it paid for itself within six years. So we got our money back in six years. Um, so geothermal is definitely the way to go. Um, if anyone on the board wants to see a uh geothermal in action, they're welcome. Anybody on, I should say on the new board, because the new board will be working with it, is uh welcome to tour our home. We have, actually, we have two geothermal systems using seven three-hundred-foot wells um with nine zones in the house, forty-eight solar panels, and sixty-four kilowatts of battery backup power. So, and anybody on the new board is welcome to come to our house and tour it anytime they like. Um, I'm not an expert on Robert's Rules of Order, but L three is still on the agenda. It was denied, the motion to table it was denied. So to me, that means it's still on the agenda, which means for the next meeting, it should be moved to unfinished business. One more thing, what a disappointment Mr. Brzezo has been to this township. Tonight's behavior is just, is like a, a childish, immature brat who, who came in to do one specific thing, probably at the supervisor's request, and as soon as that was done, he left. What a childish thing to do. What a disappointment this man has been to the township. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Does anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, bro?
Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I just wanna echo what I think Jonathan said. Uh, kudos to you, Jessica, and your staff for um the elections, early elections, election day. You guys worked your butt off. It was enthusiasm, there was energy, so I know you worked hard to do it, and thanks for pulling it off on behalf of all the residents.
And having worked the election, I can personally speak to the work, effort that was involved.
Say that again, David.
I said, having, having worked the election, or the end of the election, which um took until almost one o'clock in the morning. Which took till almost one o'clock in the morning. I can attest to the, to the um difficultness it takes to run an election and the accuracy in which um our clerk uh ran it. Thank you.
Well, thank you everybody for your help, it took about a hundred.
Is there a motion to adjourn at this point?
Moved by Riser?
Moved by Riser, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. Act N twenty-three. What was that? One setting out fireworks.